All right, we'll go ahead and get started just a little bit after six. We'll welcome everyone to Planning Commission tonight. We're a little bit shorthanded, we've got one more commissioner on our way, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to maybe ask Clint to help us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'd too. Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, going along with our agenda, there is going to be a couple of changes in the order, and I'll just kind of announce them as they come up. As far as minutes, the December minutes are not prepared, so we don't have anything to review and approve tonight, but I would take a motion to postpone that to our next meeting if there's a motion.
I'll motion that.
Okay.
All seconded.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is going to be a conditional use permit. This is a public hearing type action. Well, as Brandon come up and introduce that. Tracy?
So we've got two conditional use permits for your review tonight. The first one is the 5th south.
Oh, you don't want this.
Sorry. One second.
And you wanted this. Sorry, I went in order. That one?
Yes, thank you.
Do you want this too?
Okay, so what we've got tonight is a request for a modification to an existing tower. They're looking to swap out some antennas and some R4Us, which are remote radio units. So I did indicate there at the bottom that the height of the existing monopole will remain unchanged. Just for orientation's sake, this is where we're looking, 5th south and then 140 west. It's the existing tower that's at the north end of the storage units. DRC did review this on the 12th of December and recommended approval with no conditions. This is just a, here we go. So this is the plans that were provided by the applicant, showing the existing fenced-in yard for the equipment, as well as the base of the tower. This image here shows, you can see they'll be swapping out some of the equipment at the top. Now, this is just a close-up version showing those changes.
Okay, do you want to maybe go over the next one as well? We could...
Sure, would we like a motion on each individual item?
Separately, yes, we need a public hearings for these.
Each separately?
You can, you, I think it's your call. If you wanted to do them together, you could, it's probably better to not do them concurrently.
There's some...
Be clear, they're distinct.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm not to confuse you or...
No, just trying to keep it simple.
Or maybe a longer...
Yeah. Okay, does the commissioner have any questions on the cell tower modification? Okay, so public hearing, we'll go into public hearing. Is there any comments from the public on this? Nope. I looked straight at you, I didn't mean you had to talk, but, okay, we'll move out of public hearing. Is there any questions or comments, public commissioners? entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the 500 south cell tower modifications.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Brandon, I think you're up again.
This next item is identical. The only thing that's different is the location. So now we're looking at 200 east, 1501 north, in our light industrial zone. Once again, they're swapping out some antennas. Height of the monopole will remain unchanged. This is just an aerial showing its proximity to I-15, US 56. Once again, the DRC did look at this in December on the 12th, and they recommended approval subject to the original conditions set forth for this location. Those are referenced to the building permit that was issued in 2014, showing these are here for you tonight. These are the plans that were provided by the applicant, shows the existing storage yard as far as the equipment and the base of the tower. Once again, this is showing the swaps that are being made at the top. And then also have a push-up.
That's the end of it.
That's it. All right. Any questions on this one for now?
See any questions? Thanks, Brandon. Again, it's a public hearing, so we'll go into public hearing if there's any comments from the citizens. Seeing none, we'll move out of the public hearing, and I didn't take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval. Is, making recommendation, is that right? Oh, sorry. And with the condition that the, that Verizon follow the original conditions set at that location.
Okay, commissioner Tagg, you got a second?
All seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just a comment on this conditional use for the commissioners. These cell towers come up, oh, half a dozen times a year for really just modifications, and there doesn't seem to be too much discussion on them. And so, the city's going to work on maybe changing it to where we don't have to see modifications, but maybe just new locations that's a little more critical and give us a chance to discuss that. Dave and Brandon will let you guys kind of work on that and see if we can simplify that a little bit. Okay? Thank you. Okay, the next item is, we're going to go down to the Title 15 amendment, and Dave, you're going to present that. Again, we're kind of going out of order there a little bit, but this is what we're going to do.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We're going to do a couple of different things tonight in this item. First, I'm just going to go through the proposed changes fairly quickly, and then Mr. Snyder has a presentation that he'll make, going to talk a little bit more about the different zones or tools that we have in the city used to approve different types of multifamily projects. We should kind of go from there, this is a public hearing item, so also we hope to do that tonight as well. I want to preface what I have to say, just with a little bit of background on these actual changes. It's not often this case, but tonight, these proposed changes really are the direct result of two different projects that we've been talking about and reviewing, so we have them to use as examples, and we will use them as examples as we talk through, you know, in detail what's proposed here. Now, that is not to say that if these changes get approved, the projects that we'll use as examples necessarily will be approved. They still have their own process to go through, and that'll happen sometime after tonight, you know, if they indeed move forward, but that is why we're going to talk about the specific proposals that we have for you tonight. So, if you've looked at what we sent, or what we posted on the agenda earlier this week, what we'll talk about tonight's a little bit different. So this changed as a result of a discussion and a recommendation that came from the Development Review Committee earlier today. Changes were pretty simple, so we just made those rather quickly. You have a hard copy of the proposal that does reflect what the DRC made its recommendation on, and same as here on the screen. So, all of the changes that we'll talk about are in two different zoning kind of elements, either the infill overlay zone language, Master Plan Development language, and there's also a couple of changes on our zoning chart. So to start with infill overlay zone, right now, we do not have a maximum project size for the infill overlay. We do have this word here that kind of suggests that there might be some limit on the size of the project. We'll talk more about the reasoning behind this in a minute, so I'm just going to touch on the kind of bottom line right now. We're proposing that we create a two-acre maximum project size for the infill overlay zone, which we think coincides with the purpose of that zoning tool, and we'll talk again more about that in a minute. Now, with this change here, we think this language is appropriate to remove, and again, we'll talk more about this in a minute, but we've talked about a potential project on 400 east, and that project is less than this, it's less than one acre in size. They are proposing to construct a building that would front onto 400 east that have more than six units per, oh, sorry, more than four units per building that have six townhomes. So this change is needed so that they could put a six-unit townhome building in that project that's less than two and a half acres in size. Can you get on to the next change for us, Mike? So a couple of other changes still in the infill overlay zone, setbacks. Right now, we have some fairly explicit setback requirements for the infill overlay. This also potentially impacts the project on 400 east, and to try to be just as simple as I can in describing the change, we're proposing to eliminate the rigid standard, to replace that with this language here, which we've kind of modeled after language that we have in the Master Plan Development section of the code that simply says, it really is intended to be applied by way of, we have setbacks in each of our different zoning districts today. So those setbacks are applicable in infill overlay projects unless the city council, on a case-by-case basis, approves some variation. I like the simplicity of having it phrased that way, I like ultimately the potential opportunity that it gives the city to consider a particular proposal, and I guess that's why I'd recommend that that be considered there, switching from the situation where, again, we have things spelled out as hard minimums and potentially allow a little bit more flexibility with that. Also, we'll talk more about this when we look at the proposed change to our zoning chart. This, this language used to also be included in our Master Plan Development section of the code. We took that out when the R4 zone was adopted back in 2015, I think, and instead, density is defined on a chart that we'll look at in just a second. So I think this is somewhat obsolete now, particularly given the language that we have in point number four here. You could even say that there's kind of a conflict between this language and what we have here, because the density that's prescribed in the general plan and this don't match. So, in my view, the most effective and appropriate cleanup is to just simply eliminate what we have there with number three. Do you go next there, Mike?
Dave, on those setbacks, I agree with you, by giving some leniency on that or case-by-case, you've taken out the detail on it, but you've also got the default of every particular zone anyway to start with those setbacks. But we have, this gives us the opportunity to, case-by-case, okay?
Yep, I appreciate that, and that's a good way to describe what we're trying to accomplish So with the proposed change to set a maximum project size for an infill overlay project of two acres, we've proposed to not have overlap between infill overlay option or development and what would qualify as a master plan development. So instead of having one acre be the minimum project size for a master plan development, we're suggesting that that be raised to two acres. So this, I really don't think will have necessarily any impact on development proposals and, you know, what options might exist for a developer. It simply gives us some bright lines between the different project options based on project size, which not overlap, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. But that change is also proposed. I think that's the only one for that section, so just then down to something that we actually talked about back in July with you, so we made the same proposal back in July. And again, I'll take credit for what I think is an oversight on my part, just trying to be gentle about saying I think I made a mistake there. When we created the R4 zone and we put in this column that 18 unit to the acre maximum for that zone, I really think, because at that point in time, we had allowed projects in the R3 zone to go up to 12 units to the acre based on general plan language that we had for high-density designation in the general plan that allowed for just that, developments of up to 12 units to the acre. That was when we took the language out of the Master Plan Development section that referred to the general plan to define density, and I think we should have changed this at that point in time to coincide with that previous practice of allowing up to 12 units to the acre in the R3 zone. Not making the change that we're proposing here, I think creates a fairly significant gap between eight and 18 units to the acre, which is very distinct in a few different ways. Typically, you don't see projects with stacked dwelling units, that is, maybe apartments on top of one another or condominiums, apart, condominiums, on top of one another, that densities that are less than 12 units to the acre. So really, our R3 zone is intended to accommodate projects that would be more of a townhome or twin home, kind of a multifamily arrangement. Typically, those are in the 10 to 12 unit, you know, to the acre range, and we'll look at that a little bit more closely in a minute. And I'm reluctant to recommend that we change the zoning for projects where we really are anticipating and would like to see townhomes. I wouldn't necessarily want to use the R4 zoning tool just because of the kind of potential impact that that has then when we're zoning properties for that, that much higher density of going up to 18 units to the acre.
Is that, in red font there, eight to 12? Eight dash 12, is that the intent?
Thank you. Currently, it's eight, eight units, so that's strike through on the eight, so the eight would be replaced with 12.
Okay, okay.
There's another catch, so you can't really see this very well, but footnotes nine being added to both the R16 and R3 zones, because the infill overlay zone defines the density a little bit differently as well, based on square footage. So I think that's an important connection to make, just so our code's not contradicting itself from one section to another. I apologize, that's kind of a mouthful to describe, there's a lot of history that kind of went into how that is an eight versus a 12. Does that make sense? It's just kind of what the motivation is there. I could go on, but I'm not sure I'm going to help, so. That's it. If you have questions of me, I'd love to help now. Also, as I said, Mr. Snyder's going to make a quick presentation to talk a little bit more about some of the things I just talked about.
Okay, we'll let him take that time then. Thank you.
So as mentioned, we're going to do a brief presentation on those four development options, the R4, R5, Master Plan Development, as well as the infill overlay. Now, within this, there will be the two projects that will just be referenced briefly. It's not my intention to dive into those in detail for this part of the meeting, but after the Anella item that's listed on the agenda, we can then take some more time to discuss the two projects that are going to be shown here. So as mentioned, here's the comparison that we're looking at tonight, briefly, didn't want to make it too long, and so we'll just kind of quickly go through these. The infill overlay, as was previously discussed, excuse me, wrong one. For small parcels, specifically in our R16 and R3 zones, I do have a map that we can show briefly that will highlight where those are located, and then, as was mentioned, we have the square foot requirement that's tied to the unit for the project. So this here, we've got the, I'll just say yellow and orange, probably not right, but this would be the R16. The orange would be the R3. So these are the locations throughout Spanish Fork City where potentially the infill overlay zone could be applied. Just as a reminder, here's a project that came before you not too long ago. This was an infill overlay that was applied to the R3 zone. This was specifically the project, the Perez Townhomes. If you can remember, here's Highway 6, I think this is 4th North, yes, 4th North. And so as you can see, they did a townhome product that came off of, and kind of utilized a irregular-shaped lot that's kind of difficult to develop, and so that was a proper application of the infill overlay. The next one we have is the Master Plan Development. As you can see from the first bullet point, it applies to all four zoning designations that we're talking about in this presentation, and the code that regulates Master Plan Developments directly ties the density of the projects to the base density of the underlying zone. And so that's off of the table one that was just shown for the Title 15 amendments, and so just a quick reminder, it's the 5.37 up to the 18 units on the other end for the R5. And currently, there is that one acre minimum that would be increased to two under the This is a recent example of a Master Plan Development. Parkview Townhomes, this was just one phase, and so these numbers are slightly off. This is just across from Sports Complex Park, so this was a project that came before you that utilized the Master Plan Development option. Gives a more, gives the developer more opportunity to have flexibility as far as the layout. The R5, we'll come back to the R4 in just a second, the R5. So this was a higher-density development option that is specific to the central part of the city, the community, and it's a little difficult to interpret these second and third bullet points, but a map will do a lot better than I can, but we have a boundary of where they can be located, but then the second criteria is it has to have a certain general plan designation. Minimum project size is two acres, max again is the 18 units per acre, and then there are very explicit development standards as far as expectations of what needs to be met and what is being anticipated. This is a map that we had prepared today by our GS administrator that is worth a thousand words in my opinion, so here's that boundary bordered by 3rd west, 8 east, 1,000 north, down to 400 south. So once again, we're looking just at the central part of the community, and then you see the blue, that's the mixed-use designation, and then the yellow is the high-density residential designation. And so basically, the R5 zoning would then only be applied in these areas potentially.
Brandon, you were saying these aren't included outside of the...
Actually, they are. It's not, and so it has to meet both criteria. Yeah, correct. Good observation. And currently, we don't have any urban density designation, designation, excuse me, within the central part of the city. Currently, we have just one property that's been zoned R5. It's the Reese Apartments project that came before you not too long ago. Here's 4th North, 2nd East. This is the rendering of what's being built. If you go by there today, you can see they're starting to come out of the ground. So last but not least, we have the R4 residential district. When this was adopted, it was intended so citywide, is there an area where a project would make sense to do higher-density residential? That's why this came about, so once again, we have the 18 units per acre. Biggest difference with this option is you do have to have at least 12 acres, and so the idea is not to fit it in or squeeze it in somewhere, it's to kind of look at a larger scale and say, okay, here's a Master Plan Development at a higher density, and so we have the R4 district that would come into play. So we currently do not have any property that's zoned R4, so one of the projects that we'll discuss later tonight to get general feedback for the applicant is this development by Chris Childs. Sorry, I'm in this, so...
That's correct.
Oh, it is. Sorry, I thought it was Childs.
It's apostrophe X.
Apostrophe X, sorry. So I won't dive into too many of the details, because we will come back to this, but this is a project that's moving forward that would be utilizing the R4 zone. In this area that's in black and white, this is a part of the development, but it's in the commercial side of things.
So the zones look almost identical. I think the point you made, Brandon, was that the size is what changes. One has to be up to two acres?
Yeah.
And the other one has to be...
So the infill, we're looking at less than two acres. Currently, there's no...
I mean, between the R4 and I, or R5...
The biggest difference between the R4 and the R5 is the R5 is focused on the central part of the community, and the R4 is looking citywide. And so if it makes sense to do a project that's not in the downtown area, and there's slight differences as far as the design...
What would be the reason we couldn't do an R5, say, where this is being proposed or in any other part of the city? What's unique about an R5 in that square that was shown?
With the R5, some of the, for example, parking requirements and things along those lines are lessened from what we have in the R4 zone, with the idea that if it's maybe more of an urban project closer to services and different things like that, there might be some propensity for people to have fewer cars and that type of a thing. Also, with the R, with the R5 zone, so the Reese Apartment Zone, building height limitations, different things like that are intended to be more restrictive to keep bulk and mass a little bit less, with the idea that those projects are like what we have today. If they were constructed within that rectangle that Brandon pointed out, they're going to be in more of an existing neighborhood setting, to where we simply tried to lessen the impact that a physical project might have on neighboring properties, as opposed to a project like this, which the only area is that we have currently planned for this type of development. They would be greenfield development, they'd be out somewhat remote from existing neighbors and existing development, where I think, speaking for myself, but also I think the zone reflects the idea that we're more comfortable with something bigger and feel like those are the appropriate places to have more in terms of scale, you know, again, bulk and mass and those types of things, because, you know, there's probably not going to be much impact on neighbors in that case. So the changes or the difference... So the, the changes or the differences, I mean, they're pretty nuanced, they're pretty subtle, and I think, you know, that's basically it.
Yeah. And yet the density is the same. It's interesting you, I think it's wise for the reasons that you reviewed here, but yeah, thanks for that update.
And then just briefly, the other project that we'll discuss and get feedback with you, this one's also working its way through the review process, is the cottages on 4th. They'd be proposing an R3 zone and then also utilizing the infill overlay. And so the product that they're, they're proposing as, as far as the dwelling, excuse me, is townhomes. And so we'll discuss that more in just a little bit. This would be in the central part of the community. And then I believe we'll come back to these. Yeah. And so we'll come back and talk. This is more of the cottages on 4th.
So what this?
Or do you have any questions about this before we maybe?
No, this has been helpful. I really like, I really like the pictures and examples. I think that helps us picture it versus looking at text.
Got it.
So appreciate the extra effort there. It looks like there's a real clarification between up to two acres and over two acres. So if somebody come in and wanted to do a project that was two and a half acres and we make this change, that puts them into a master plan. If it's an acre and a half, it's an infill overlay.
And some of the regulations at that point would change. So in some ways, the project might be a little bit different. But at the same time, the differences aren't so substantial that, you know, Brandon pointed anything out of that, or, you know, they're just not that significant.
Yeah. Okay.
One way to look at these, I might just add, is that zoning can be kind of like a toolbox to where it's just that, there are different tools that can be used to achieve a particular end that we might want to see in terms of the development. And these four different things that Brandon described, that's really, as I see it, what they are, the different tools. So as people come in and speak with us about maybe an idea that they have for a property, then we start to think about, well, okay, that is sounding a little bit like this. So these are the two, or these are the regulations that would come into play. That's what you need to be aware of. And that's also partly why I like having, again, kind of some bright lines between those tools so that we can form people in a specific direction and just be a little bit more clear.
Yep. Any questions from the commissioners before we go into public hearing? Okay, we're going to go into public. We're going to go into public hearing. Is there any comments from those in attendance that would like to comment?
I know we have some developers in the room. Do any of you have opinions on this? Is this heading the right direction, wrong direction? All right, I saw some thumbs up and nods. Perfect. Let's keep moving.
Okay, we will move out of public hearing. If there is no additional questions, I entertain the motion.
I'll go ahead and motion that we approve the changes proposed in Title 15.
Okay, and that's a recommendation, right? We've got a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Argyle, a second?
Second.
A second and all in favor?
All right.
Okay, we are going to move back up to the third item on the agenda, which is the Nella Town Homes. This is also going to be a public hearing. And Dave, I think you're going to take the lead on this?
Yes, sir. And just so I don't forget to mention this later, we did receive this letter earlier today from representatives of Stinging Bee Land and Livestock LLC. Just describing, so I'm going to kind of paraphrase here for a second without reading it all. We will make sure this gets in the record. Some thoughts, I would even say potential concerns that, that they have with the proposal that we'll discuss here. Do you want to take a minute to, to read through that?
So these are neighbors to the property?
I believe they own property that's adjacent to the subject property to the south.
Can Mike pull up that map for us? We can see where these folks are located in comparison.
In fact, I think I can, where we can go.
I was almost there.
So the subject property. So the subject property, maybe a good time to, to get a little bit oriented. For me, this is the landmark to use. It's McDonald's over here, so we are east of McDonald's, just south of Expressway Lane. We're talking about, in essence, the southern half of this parcel right here. So Mr. Clark, do you mind putting the general plan layer on? Currently, the general plan identifies this as commercial. I think it's zoned commercial office as well. So the proposal is to take, again, the southern half of this property approximately and to change it from the commercial designation, which is identified with this red color, and to, in essence, kind of connect it to this high density residential designation that we have already right here. You can also see, just with this image here, that we already have quite a bit of property in the immediate area that's designated high density residential, which certainly influences how I look at it, just from a land use perspective relative to the Stinging Bee correspondence. They own this property right here, and I believe some of these homes here are also owned by either the Bee Singers or their relatives. So in essence, they're just to the south.
Is that lighter yellow, a different?
It's a medium density. So the high density designation is intended to allow for development of up to that 12 unit to the acre range. This would be between five and eight units to the acre typically. So a little bit less dense residential development, but also still residential.
Has this been built right here?
It's almost entirely done, yes. They're finishing up their last building, I think, now.
The reason I ask, the reason I ask is it looks like this land property over here may have had some experience with issues here that are addressed in their letter. That's just what it looks like possibly could have happened.
I hope not, but that certainly is possible, yeah.
Oh, this is livestock, barns and sheds and things it looks like back there. So they're, in their letter here, they're saying something about being done with something across this part where they connect.
Uh huh. Yep, where they have but, where they, and we can talk certainly more about that. And we will talk more about that certainly if the project moves forward. This is a little bit, it's, we haven't changed the general plan, in fact, for a specific development that I can remember in, in quite some time. Or at least we don't do it regularly. Typically, when proposals for developments come through, even when there's a, a zone change proposed, the requested zoning matches what we have on the general plan. So you often see a zone change proposal with a preliminary plat. We have a public hearing at that point in time, and that's it. In this case, in my view, given the fact that this is a fairly sizable project, the current designation for the property is commercial, that's very distinct from the residential designation that we're talking about here. I felt and, and feel like it's appropriate to have this discussion and a hearing and to get your thoughts on amending the general plan before we bring a zone change to you so that when that comes, we've kind of laid the groundwork, if you will, for a project in that zone. And frankly, if the general plan gets amended, I think these gentlemen, the applicants, probably in the next month or two, will be back requesting a zone change and plat approval for the example that we're using tonight, which is their, their townhome project here. But the particular request that's before tonight, it's really as simple as a proposed change on the general plan map, the land use map of the general plan, from commercial to high density residential. And that's it.
R3.
And then the zoning would still remain the same. It would not change with this particular proposal, it would stay commercial office. But if their project moves forward, a zone change would be necessary. And we've talked with the applicants about changing the zoning to R3, which would be consistent with the high density residential general plan designation that we're talking about tonight. But that's not part of the request that's before you tonight.
Okay. We're just talking tonight about changing the general plan?
Yes.
This will be a recommendation?
Yes.
That's made?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'd also mention as well, the concerns that, that are raised by the Bee Singers. Certainly some of those would be addressed just with our requirements for multifamily development that abuts other residential properties. However, not necessarily all of them would. You know, they've, they've suggested that road be located, for example, along the south side of the property and that sort of thing. And I don't believe that's necessarily part of the applicants' end plans for the development. And in all candor, I don't think we as a city necessarily have a concern with the layout that, that the applicants proposed here either. This is a little bit unique. Also, just to add this before I, I conclude, we have the general plan proposal that's before you tonight. Also, we have some fairly detailed plans. So we certainly would like you to act, whether it's to make a recommendation to approve, deny, or to continue the general plan amendment tonight. But then also, whether it's part of this discussion with the general plan amendment or later, I know the applicants and staff would love to get any feedback that you have on this as well.
Way it's.
Kind of like we've done occasionally with just that informal opportunity to get some feedback.
Okay.
Handle that however you'd care to.
Sounds good.
I have one other question. Master plan is taking our best guess looking forward, is my understanding of it. And so we took a best guess, and now things are built in there and filled in. Does the way, can we go back, Mike, to that master plan view? The way things have filled?
General plan.
General plan, sorry. Well, the master, isn't this the master?
General plan.
General plan. Okay. So general plan, as things are filled in, does it make sense to keep this commercial so we have a chance to potentially have some big commercial customers move in here? Or is it better way it's all filled in here? And here, as you were pointing out earlier, so this gets utilized appropriately to have it turn into residential? And what's your observation and your view as our city planner?
Thank you. That's a great reminder of something that we need to talk about. This property was zoned commercially with a purpose, without a doubt. And I will not recommend that we change the zoning from commercial, or a general plan designation, from commercial to residential if I think there's any potential at all that that property someday can be used for a non-residential use. And oftentimes, just from a feasibility, you know, market readiness type of perspective and that sort of thing, the residential use is ripe long before the commercial use. So it'd be really easy to sacrifice future commercial development potential because people want to bu, build houses on a property today. I should say that, you're certainly sensitive to that, that possibility. And again, I think that's why this is zoned commercial today. I've been talking with people about developing this property since I got here. And it has one, I think, big flaw, really big. This image doesn't necessarily show it at all, but in fact, their, their concept plan kind of does. There, so this is the subject property, that's that red that we're just looking at. And this shows really well. Do we have photographs in the prezi? We do, don't we, of the site? Something might be good to look at as well.
Yeah. Wetland issues.
A significant part of this area here is wetlands that have been defined as jurisdictional wetlands by the Army Corps of Engineers, which simply means that it can't be developed. And maybe I'll talk more about that in just a second. But with the frontage being undevelopable because of the wetlands, the people that I've talked to have said, there's really not any realistic expectation that somebody's going to set a non-residential development, even if it's like a professional office, kind of a project, back a few hundred feet from the road that a project fronts and have wetlands in between that and that project. You know, they're simply going to look someplace else for property to put that kind of a use on. So as long as wetlands are here, I really don't think this property has potential to support a commercial use. So maybe part of our recommendation on this is raising the white flag, you know, in the hope of, of seeing it develop commercially somehow. And that's what has me comfortable, you know, recommending that this change happen now. Now, that all being said, there is the possibility always that somebody would buy the property and work on mitigating the wetlands along the frontage. This is Expressway Lane here, which would require significant investment, among other things, to work with the Corps of Engineers. So this could become developable.
You're saying all the years you've been here, that hasn't happened?
It hasn't happened, and I don't think today that land values in Spanish Fork are high enough that somebody's going to make that type of an investment here. But I will say this, I would not be surprised, and it probably would be after my time working on things like this, if somebody, you know, it's simply, it's just a matter of, I think of economics, if somebody did feel like the land that would remain if this project got approved was valuable enough to go through that process with the Corps of Engineers and essentially replace these wetlands with more wetlands someplace else. If that were to happen, the layout that I think we're looking at tonight, you know, still does a pretty good job of preserving that frontage for a non-residential use. And it's not necessarily because of anybody's benevolence or, you know, willingness to preserve something for the future, just the fact that today you can't do anything with it, that's why it would be left over. But I wouldn't be surprised if maybe decades down the road, those properties were still developed non-residentially, which is partly why our recommendation for the general plan amendment is just to change the general plan on the southern part of the property and to still keep that commercial designation along the Expressway Lane frontage. Is that, that's kind of a long explanation of what we're thinking about.
Can I add one thing real quick that we've kind of discussed? So you can see the water, kind of pathway here, right, that comes in? And then it goes back out that way. Previous discussions with them, they mentioned that this water may be designated that it could be removed, this pipe could be stopped. And then this would maybe perhaps dry out, and then they could have it re-investigated and then have the wetlands shrunk from the designation. I haven't seen the designation, I don't know if that includes this.
It does.
It does include that. So that's in your, is that your detention pond now, or what's this going to be?
Yeah, there's a small spring there.
So what's, isn't this within your development?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a current delineation that.
Okay. So what's your plan for this? Because I think that goes with this discussion, that's why I interrupted to kind of bring this up.
So we're going to have to invite them up, aren't we? We're in a, or we're going to have to open up the public discussion? I'm just asking.
Well, they're, they're part of the applicant, right? I think it'd be great to have them come up and maybe answer that question or, we're going to give them time anyway to talk.
Is that right? Speaking of?
Yes. Yeah.
So here's some issues from the property. It's a, it's a pretty good. You guys know where this is at.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty good.
Yeah.
We've been working with Army Corps for a year and a half. Here's the old delineation, so here's, you can see how, how that impacted the property.
Years ago, same.
Oh, yeah. We're still working with them. This is our ID. Here's a color red, you're even wanting to put houses, a lot of different sizes of houses. So you have, we've got it down to the size of the small English budget. So also, this here, we have some, we have a detention pond here. I can't see a detention.
Deal with that spring that he just mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it was his question.
Well, it was his question.
Mike brought up, you're coming across the road here with the...
So, so they will let us. The problem is, is there are some issues that you can't...
Can't what?
You... Yeah. And... And it'll... It just don't... So that's my... He will...
What's that? Sure.
That's a possible...
Okay, right there? All right.
The property on the end of that road, I don't know how...
Well, the other thing is, is you bring...
No, down from that.
But it stopped a lot of them wherever it's coming. Where would you pipe it to?
Down below that, or here?
There.
Well, and where would it...
There, this triangular piece? Okay, great. So...
Pipe the ghost, the ghost.
We'd love to use, we'd love if you'd actually turn this home into residential, but I would think, whatever you guys think. We came before you a year ago, this...
Yes, I remember.
Yeah.
Remember this gentleman, yes.
This idea here or with...
It was a, right of a higher end.
I think this is high-end. I don't have as good pictures, but it would be a high-end unit.
Seemed like it had a swimming pool and kind of a commons area? No? No? Okay.
You own all this, I'm assuming?
We don't own this. So we're just buying this.
You're buying that.
Yeah.
You're looking at having something, this is your detention pond.
Yes, that's right here.
And then back...
How about the answer to my question?
Is where you're talking about...
Those are here.
So now this way. That's where we need to have one voice.
See how this is for...
Yeah.
You have less than...
Is there any happy present?
Yeah.
Is that it on mic?
I moved this over here trying.
So, kind of for anybody that might be one of the, I think we're up to tens of thousands of viewers, right? Planning commission meetings?
Tens of thousands.
Stick with the ten part.
We've been talking about some of the details. I'm kind of curious about the, just the questions relative to wetlands and that sort of thing. Do you mind maybe just kind of rehashing that?
No.
Let me mention as well, though, again, tonight, you can get into as much detail here as you'd like to. And I think frankly, that is helpful for us as staff and the applicant with the idea that if the project moves forward, we all want to bring it to you as ready as it can be for you to feel comfortable with it. So any detailed feedback that you want to give is certainly is appreciated. But still, we were kind of talking ultimately just about the broader issue tonight, at least.
Yeah. Not, not designs, not road widths, not that. We're talking about changing the general plan.
So that's the item.
Tonight.
But still, if you want to give us feedback or anything else, that's great.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself as the applicant, and we'll have you kind of cover the in-between stuff that staff hasn't.
My name's Andrew Christensen, and Neela Ridge is our, is our project. We've been working with Army Corps for a year and a half, trying to get this to a point where we can develop this part of the property. We're, we think we have a good project. We'll have, we've worked with Chris and with the staff about having different sizes of units and different styles of units. We'll have brick and stone and a good product. The front part is, is we have had them come out. They are not willing to, at this time, let that go as wetlands. The Army Corps isn't. They are pretty, pretty hardcore that that needs to remain wetlands. We, our consultant actually asked that that be released from wetlands, and that didn't go very well. So they're pretty, pretty determined that that's what that should remain at this time. We would like to continue to work on that in the future and try to get that out of that designation, of course, if we can. I don't know if that's possible, but we're sure we're going to try because we'd like to. I think it's a great area, your city, of the city, and it's, it's something that we'd like to, to have as, as develop a acreage, so.
Okay.
And we don't own that right now. We would like to purchase that in the future, so.
My name's Greg Hunt. We came a year ago, almost, presented this, and after we got some guidance that it would be acceptable to it, we went ahead with the Army Corps, and we've been able to, I don't know how to run this, but...
What do you want to do?
We've been able to, if you look at the thing, we've been able to get everything but a small channel here out of wetlands, and our long-term plan is to leave that kind of in a small park area, not really touch that. There's a, like a spring in this area, they're going to designate as a seep, that's going to be underneath a detention pond. And there's about 30 square feet right here that'll touch a unit in an area, and that's really what we ended up with, other than where the road to the north will cross. As you can see here with cleaning up the channel, we were able to minimize that down to about 100 feet by about three feet.
So this is our...
So the area that we, where the units would go, all but 30 feet of it's pretty much removed.
One thing that I would caution you is, is that you're in a part of the city, in an area in the city that's wet. And that's the reason that this place looks like this and further to the north. And if you've been working on this for a year and a half, the last year and a half have been the driest year and a half that we have had in about 60 years. So the water that you're seeing now is a minimum. There's a strong possibility that the springs that exist just in the back of here along the railroad cut and in other areas, it will increase. One of the things that has been here since I can remember as a kid is that there are ponds that have been there forever. They're naturally occurring. They have been dug a little deeper to plant some fish at times. There's been other projects that are there. But that will impact whatever you do in this, in this area unless you have somewhere for that water to go. If you plan on keeping it on-site, these will grow, and that will create some issues for you guys, or at least for the property owners that go in there, because then you have problems with mosquitoes and other pests and other rodents that can get in here. And, you know, as long as it's maintained, as long as you have some type of plan to eradicate some of that stuff, that could be an issue in here. And if you've dealt with the, with the Corps for the last couple of years, it sounds like you have, and they are hardcore. I don't know anybody else in government that is as hardcore as they are. You know, you're kind of bound by what they, what they say, and usually the way to work with those guys is to get them to tell you what, what they'll allow you to do before you tell them what you're going to do. And, and they're a little more receptive to that. As far as what we're talking about now, I think that this area is a good, you know, I, I think the change that we're talking about is good for here, and it's a good first step to going in there. I don't know what a better use would be for this part of, of that property. One thing that I, I'm always interested in is that it seems like the developers go for the, go for the, the quick money first. Let's get this built. That's where there's going to be a bunch of money, and then we're going to keep working on this and hope this comes. And that's logical. Where else are you going to get your money to continue your project? But in doing that, you know, I would hope that there would be some improvement in this area that's going to, that's going to look at this water that's coming in here, the water that's here is, is probably the least you'll ever see. You know, and this spring, you may see this come back quite a bit. And then what do we do with it? How do you mitigate that issue on this ground? And I'm not talking about for the, for the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm, I'm talking about how do you, how do you mitigate it for this property?
Well, some, some of this water is coming in the pipe right here.
Yes.
And our plans call for having it go straight and go right out the road and connect into the, across the street. So that water will, according to the plans we have designed so far, that will disappear.
So this pipe that you're planning on connecting into there, that obviously is a city pipe?
Yes.
And that pipe is going where? Where does it go?
Canyon Creek.
Canyon Creek. So it's part of the water right that was filed on by the city recently, or that was traded to the city? Is that right? How did that work?
I don't know either. But I thought that there's a connection.
There is a connection, and it's measured. And, and part of this, this is, is part of that right.
Right.
And so if you, if you modify that, that has to be either measured or accounted for in some way, shape, or form. And there, it's very likely that, that these seeps and the, this water is someone's.
Just so you know, right now, there's an inlet right there that goes across the street and connects into that pipe.
Right.
This ditch runs right down through here and goes there. All we're going to do is send it sooner.
So it's good.
It's not changing where it's going. It's just going...
We're just getting it there a little quicker. Right. And I'm just saying that I'd encourage you to make sure that you have checked on whose water it is, what, what right makes, you know, what, what water is being used for what right here. And, you know, whether, if you change that right, there's a certain procedure that has to be followed.
State of the game.
And I think that Spanish Fork City has acquired that right, or it's in the process of being acquired. And, and so that's something that, you know, just because it's on your property doesn't mean that it's yours to do what you want with it. It has to be accounted for.
We're going to change the connection point from here to about right here.
Yeah. So instead of it coming down here, up on the screen there, so instead of it coming here, it's going to come here, over and down, but they'll end up in the same pipe right here. It's, anyway, I'll let you answer this other question after.
Just, and that doesn't have anything to do with what we're discussing tonight, but as you make the plans for your, your detention basin and those kinds of things, if that affects the flow that is being, that is being accounted for in this pipe, that is going in this pipe now, and now it's not because it's being, you know, it's being detained here or somewhere else, then that changes that right. And so you just have to make sure that all of it, all of those pieces fit together as you go forward. It's just, it's just a matter of doing it. It's not necessarily something that's going to be difficult. It's just going to be time-consuming that you're going to have to do that. So, and you're, the plan that you had there, maybe we can go to it, you've got, you've got a, a road that is, is laid out to come south right here. I guess that would be with, this is on the south boundary, right?
Yes. That's the request of staff, that they would like to show an ex, a potential access point.
Extension of that, of that road. So the two, the two areas, you'll go to the west here to 1100. Is that 1100?
Yes.
And this one over to Expressway.
So are any other questions for the applicant?
What are the plans you talked to me about when you first applied or came met with me about this water?
Potentially, if we were to go forward, we were, we've talked, would it be economically feasible to pipe that?
We're going to try to pipe it.
Eventually.
And then re-apply with the Corps to delineate the wetlands?
We'll have to probably, we've had long discussions with them about even touching that water.
So I guess I just wanted to illustrate for the planning commission to give you the full picture, because right now it appears that anywhere you see that's green and then this little creek, I think it's right here, appears to be in the delineated wetlands is not being able to touch. So then this, is appealing, right? Because it's, as John said, the most easily developed right now. So my question was, what's the timing? What's the temperature of the, the core? Because when you met with me, you mentioned that if you reroute this water and you reroute this water, there's not a whole lot else coming. And with the east bench developing, there's less irrigation water coming through the walk, through the ground. So the drop in groundwater is naturally going to occur that way, even on a wet year, you'll see a lot lower. And so then this becomes much more developable?
Yes.
And maybe a river would's a, maybe it's, becomes more a feature than a nuisance water. And so as we say, well, this is zoned commercial and this is zoned residential, let's make that change, come with the thought that it could be a nearer future, that this is a very small stream of water compared to what it is today's now.
May become a feature rather than a nuisance.
We are, I mean, we've talked, talked about it. We would like to go forward with it, but it's quite expensive to take that north part out.
You may consider when you do that, rather than try and catch it on the north side of the road, to come underneath with your pipe, that's still a pain in the butt, but then come down this way and get that into that pipe inside of your property rather than going in.
There's a problem. We cannot pipe it anything that's designated as wetlands currently.
Well, you're not going to be able to get rid of this until you resolve that anyway. So however, I mean, it's the cart and the horse, but...
We've had some discussions with it, and we have some ideas. But that's out there always. We have worked where we think we can, we don't, we only can do this something.
Well, I think we'll go into public hearing, and we may need to call back for some, some additional questions. Thank you for your comments. You can leave those there for just a minute if you want. Okay, we're going to go into a public hearing. Is there anybody from the audience that'd like to make comments about this project? Would you go ahead and come up, introduce yourself at the mic? Yes?
My name's Doug Pinder. My mom, Jan Pinder, owns the property on the west between SR 51 and Expressway Parkway, that, that ground right there. The question I have is why the city doesn't just move all that out of commercial into high density? Then they can incorporate some parks or ponds or do some different things with that property. Right now, if you cut that in half, that property to the north, I think somebody made the comment earlier, you know, the commercial development on that is never going to happen or it's going to be way down the road before it's going to be feasible. My thought is, is why not just take that whole piece of ground and put it into high density? That way, you know, the, the city, planning commission has some options as to developing that property with different parks and ponds and things like that. So my grandfather owned the property to the north of that one, it used to be the old dump. And when we had the property on it, when they put the, the trailer houses on it and had the problems with the roads and had to move all that, so I'm really familiar with all that ground over a long period of time. And I just, you know, don't see much, where everything north of this is all commercial, everything south of Expressway Parkway, there's no commercial, and I don't see that commercial is very viable on this property at all. I own a title insurance company. We've been in title business for years, so I'm very familiar with different land uses and property development. So my recommendation to the council would be just to turn all that into, to high-density housing, and I, I think that's been presented to you in the past, and it's been turned down, hopefully keeping half of that commercial. But the way that property sits and the land and the ground and everything else, I just, my thought is it's, it's not very feasible, so that's...
Yeah.
I don't know if you have any questions for me or anything, but...
So would that be, so, yes, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So you're saying then us to consider all of this, move into high density?
All of it into high density.
Okay.
We've looked at, at, at commercial on that end there. I think way down the road, I think the general plan has that road. I don't know if 880 north is planning on bringing traffic all the way down to the freeway. There's really not another road right now that, that has access to I-15 coming out of the canyon except for, you know, hooking into Highway 6 up off Canyon Road or dumping out way down lower. So I don't know what the plan is for the future, but all this growth up on top somehow has got to get down to the freeway. And right now, I don't know what the general plan is, but 980 north is really the only access road right now that, that, that the city has to go to the freeway. And I, I just don't see a lot of, you know, I don't know what the plan is for that now that they've kind of blocked all that off with the, the housing along there, so.
This is the plan for that?
That road to go down.
We're working on the design right now for that green road.
It stops right here, right now, right?
Yeah.
So then there's really no, no viable reason for commercials to go down into that corner down where my property is or any other property kind of south of the, on Expressway Lane, so.
So are you asking for your property to be included in the general plan?
I, I don't care. I think, my property, I think it'd be more valuable if you're just looking at value, high-density rather than commercial at this point. But we're not in any hurry to sell. It really doesn't matter to us. We've been sitting on it for 50 years and probably, it really doesn't matter to us one way or the other. But I, just looking at it, I don't see the potential of, of commercial being developed But I just, looking at it, I don't see the potential of, of commercial being developed on that property at all, anytime in the near future, so.
You see residential happening before? Yeah.
Yes, especially high density, because then you can get a bonus or you can, you can encourage the developer to turn it into a park or a pond or something to, to deal with all the wetland issue there.
Right.
And make it economical for them to develop it and make it look nice, rather than what it looks like across the street. And, and I know the, the, I think the city's planning on putting a weigh station further north, if I'm understanding things right in the city, but, um, so.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
So my name is Tyler Cope, I'm the real estate broker that's had this particular site listed for the past few years and, uh, just wanted to make a few comments. The owners of the property have been working on it, as Dave mentioned, for a number of years, to see if they can get something done to, to utilize the site and take advantage of its highest and best use. And, um, it's been very difficult to make progress with these wetland issues. And it was discovered, um, that, um, this storm drain issue was the biggest issue. So at some point, uh, probably around the year 2000, when, uh, the whole, um, ordeal was going on with the manufactured homes across the street, there were some changes in the, in, uh, Expressway. And when those changes occurred, that storm water got dumped onto their, onto their, their property. And that created the wetland. So in other words, the problem became as a result of just poor planning and poor communication between the landowner and the city. And, um, it's been a struggle to resolve this. And, um, we finally have traction to where this plan that's being proposed can move forward. Whether the site, um, should be considered for, for high de, high density or commercial. Dave brought that up, that it would, it's definitely ideal for the city for this to be a commercial development. And you could see why if that frontage is able to be used sometime in the future, why that would be advantageous. However, it's also a good idea to keep in mind that this property is along a corridor that is a public transit corridor. And with that being the case, the state is, is beginning to, um, consider legislation to encourage more multifamily development along those corridors for planning purposes. And so that's one thing that, that this body should consider, that perhaps maybe it's not a good idea to just, you know, this, this proposal for the first phase is great. Second phase, maybe it shouldn't be locked down to just a commercial only option. And that it should be considered for multifamily. And as Mr. Pender, uh, expressed, that would be ideal for their situation too. It looks like they're open to that idea. So there, there are plenty of other opportunities for commercial in town. And, um, we have a housing shortage and could use more, more residential units sooner than later. So, um, which is also why, you know, you're seeing the proposals for the ADUs and all the other, um, options. So anyway, thank you for your time and for consideration.
Okay, thank you Tyler. Any other public comments? Okay, we're going to move out of public hearing. And let the commissioners ask questions and talk about this, is there?
Yeah, I have, I have a question, Mike, can you put the general plan overlay on to this again? It seems like. Yeah, so I'm just considering this and should we consider changing it? Just, it's kind of like a big red island out on its own right there. So I don't know if we ought to consider. And I don't know if this is the right time to consider. Dave, is this okay, time to consider changing all of that? Or today's just a half or that's all we can do? Recommend that.
Can you make a recommendation on that or?
Cause I'm actually leaning towards making a recommendation, changing all of it. Cause to me, that's just a red island and for all the years you've been here, nobody commercially has been able to make it work. We now have people that can figure out how to make it work residential wise. I think it's something we ought to consider.
I, I'm curious, uh, a year ago when this was presented to us, I remember the presentation of the whole thing. How, how was that left, Dave?
It's all on property though.
Do you remember if? I, I can't remember if it got approved or if it was a zone change then. I know it was a big master plan with all of it filled in with homes. Do you remember that, when they presented a year ago?
I don't remember that.
It, it was the whole, whole entire piece, wasn't it?
Entire piece.
Including the, the frontage where.
The frontage and one of your members recommended that maybe we should leave the north portion commercial.
Okay.
And the way it worked out with the Army Corps and after we met with them and some consultants on site, engineers, it made, it was more feasible that way, because it was actually doable. And, but it was somebody in your group said, well, what if we were to do half of it and leave the north part with the frontage part commercial? From our perspective, we're, we can make either one work. We've put the time and energy into making what we thought was doable now.
Yeah. It looked like a nice project from what I remember, the, the whole thing, it was, it was.
It was.
I think you had an example of another community that was, you was kind of comparing it to.
And we still had the same challenges with the water and those type of things. And we probably wouldn't be anywhere more further along than we are now, with being able to do half of it at, at this point.
I just wasn't sure what the planning commission recommended or what the city council did.
It was somebody in your groups that we would like.
Well, nothing's ever been discussed with the city council on this.
So we must have tabled it or something.
Discussion, not an action item or anything along those lines.
Might have been more of a presentation than it was an actual application.
It was a presentation.
Okay, okay.
One of your members suggested that we leave the north half if it's ever developable as commercial where it has.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to ask both of you guys. It, it was mentioned that because this road is, uh, Dave, uh, I need your input on this as well. Because this road is a commercial road and has commercial on the other side now, on the north side here, is all commercial. I would imagine that it would continue to the corner. And, uh, and so it would make some sense that this matches that, uh, that the frontage be commercial to me. And then this, this pie shaped piece here, while I recognize that it may be part of some commercial or some high density here, uh, it always seems like an intersection is a prime place for commercial, for a couple of reasons. Visibility, uh, accessibility and stuff like that. You've only got two pieces here that, that meet that criteria. The rest of this, uh, maybe isn't quite as important. But, you know, I, I guess my, my question is, is what, what would the staff's vision be for this? You know, right now we're looking at commercial along there. Is, is that what we would prefer? Is that what, uh, you know, conform, not, not conforms, but matches the neighborhood and, and stuff? Or do we want to continue that whole thing as, as high density?
Can I throw something in with that? Just across the street, it's mixed use, right? Isn't that with the blue designated mixed use? So if this was, a recommendation was made to make all of this mixed use across, including the high density section and the corner triangle, would that allow them the potential to go forward with what they want to do with zone changes to the specifics? And give them the potential to still, we, they could still put commercial in there, they could put high density, but it would allow a lot more potential for developers to look at the opportunities if we made it all mixed use instead of dividing it in half?
Yes.
That's, thanks. That's what I wanted.
Now let me interject, just my thoughts. I appreciate the request and I'm just going to be direct. I'll tell you, if we have thought, if we would have thought, if the applicants had ever represented us that there was any potential to develop out here, there's no way we'd be recommending tonight that the general plan be amended and that we consider putting townhomes on this property. For the reasons that I mentioned when, you know, I first started to describe the proposal tonight, you cannot recreate property that is adjacent to a route like Expressway Lane. You can't recreate a hard corner on a state highway. You can put townhomes anywhere, literally. They'll sell, people live in them, you can make great neighborhoods. But the other factors that this property has going for it, um, relative to location, proximity to other non-residential uses and different things like that, we can't recreate. You just simply can't. So that, along with the, the simple fact that commercial land in Spanish Fork, I mean, obviously it's finite. There's a certain amount of it, but beyond being finite, it's limited. So in fact, do you mind zooming out for us a little bit? Maybe not quite that much.
That's all the way to Nefi.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's not, let's kind of just maybe. If for reasons that are easy to understand, you know, if somebody were to just take a drive through this part of the community or in and around Canyon Creek and that sort of a thing. You could, so this is what we're talking about here. Again, for me, great reference points.
McDonald's, yeah, there you go.
It looks like there's a lot of land available for development, right? I mean, it, there's a lot of vacant space. But when you start taking out wetlands and landfill, more wetlands, a whole development that has a contractual restriction, for example, on any kind of medical office development, and you start layering those different, uh, development limitations on top of one another, you know, pretty quickly you start to struggle to find sites for non-residential development. And that's, that's where we've been for years. We routinely, on a monthly, if not a weekly basis, talk to folks that are trying to find space. You know, whether it's folks that are working on trying to have something in close proximity to the IHC project that's underway or people that maybe want space for a body shop or any one of a number of non-residential uses. It's hard to find space in Spanish Fork today for that. So again, I've used the word jealousy like I often do when it comes to not wanting land that can be developed feasibly and be marketed for non-residential uses to develop residentially. I won't recommend that you ever do that. You know, it's city council's prerogative ultimately, but certainly this property, hard corner, uh, if it can be developed, if those wetlands can be mitigated, uh, then first of all, we want to make sure that, like I think, you know, again, back in the spirit of what we came recommending be approved tonight, uh, we'd want to make sure that land that's not developed now could be developed feasibly with a non-residential use. And if you've got something between a hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty feet of depth, but maybe to answer your question more particularly, you could, you could have everything from feasible pads for banks to professional office buildings to retail strip kind of development, different things like what you maybe see elsewhere along that corridor or others in the community, there's room to do that. And I think that syncs up well with kind of logic that we've brought to the table in terms of, uh, being open minded to the applicant's proposal on the southern half of the property and having that change, um, to allow for the townhomes. Clearly the most valuable part of this property for non-residential use is the frontage. And, you know, that's why we've recommended that, that southern part be changed with the idea that potentially if there is development opportunities for the frontage, that still could happen non-residentially.
The, the concern I have with splitting it up is you've made use of the residential piece, made good use of it, you get it done. And then that front north just sets and sets and sets because of this water. And now you've got an eyesore for a long time. So my question would be, how, how could we use, utilize all of it? And, and the presentation that you brought a year ago, if that was approved, if the commissioner or council felt that that would be a good use of all of it versus leaving a strip of, you know, could it be done? Or what have you learned since then?
What our thoughts are long term.
Okay.
Gone ahead and made, made this, prepared this property where it's usable now. And it, it's not feasible to put commercial way back off a main road. It's just not going to work. So our thoughts were is if we can develop this into these townhomes, our next move would be to meet with the engineering department and see if it is feasible to box this and run it down that road. Get it out of there. And if it gets out of there, then the water's gone. But it's not feasible to do it unless we can develop a portion of it now.
And, and then at that point, would you, would you make it, your desire would be to go ahead and make it usable for offices or commercial or whatever? Yeah.
But we would go back to the Corps and we would have to go through a whole nother delineation process and.
But the way it sets right now, you couldn't do the whole thing in, in the homes, the way you presented it, right?
Couldn't even do it if we wanted to.
Okay, okay.
We, we, as Andre pointed out, we are consultants, we went out of state, we interviewed many. I walked that property with quite a few. It was, and finally found some that we had confidence in and went to work with. And they made the appeal to the Corps to remove it all and the Corps said no way.
Yeah.
They said, there's water there and unless that water is removed, this is going to stay wetland. But as you can see from that map, we got most of the area, other than maybe thirty square feet of where we'll be building, out of wetlands.
Will they let you pipe that?
That's a discussion. There is a way to do it, it's going to take cooperation with you. We cannot touch, you cannot pipe water that goes to wetlands inside of wetlands. In other words, keep it in the road and we can do it.
Has the Corps accepted your delineation?
Uh, if you'd like to see the thing, there's like four little marks that Scott, Scott.
I just want to see.
Scott Peterson is saying, Scott is making four little adjustments to it and it's done.
Wouldn't you anticipate adding a letter from the Corps?
I hope I have it within two weeks. The map that's here is the, is the map that was returned by.
That's what you've given the Corps?
And that is what they sent back to us. So there is a map that they sent back with four marks on it that asking Scott to please identify this channel. Where in your map, see how much clearer this picture is when it shows the channel up there? Please identify that channel clearer than it is on here. So it's down to nitty gritty.
How does that change any of what we're talking about?
Well, um.
Dave, or do you?
The reason that you're talking about this tonight versus maybe a year ago is that, uh, you know, consistent with what we've talked to other people about on the property, we know there are wetlands there. The Corps has accepted proposed delineations from consultants in the past. It's on their radar screen and we haven't had any interest as the city in approving projects that people couldn't build. And if people propose to build in areas that are jurisdictional wetlands, then, you know, that, that can't happen. So we wanted to make sure that a project that we brought to you could be constructed so before this comes to you.
Community, lagoon opportunity.
That's the old one. And just, so you know, when we walked it, we walked the property with representatives from the Corps with our current plans, our current studies and maps, and they had three old delineation of them. We walked around there and dug holes in places that they designated from their old delineations that they wanted to check. And that map that's in there, when I showed you, is the map to where we set, showing where the line is going to be.
Before we bring a preliminary plat to you to consider, we'll have a.
We'll have a determination.
From the US Corps of Engineers, so we know exactly what we're working with, what the applicants would be working with and what.
Does Commissioner Taggs' suggestion, maybe, is it more beneficial? Would it, would it give us flexibility to allow multiple things happen out there?
That's the whole idea, absolutely, of mixed use, you bet.
And even on the corner, if, uh, if, if a convenience store or something wanted to go here, is that okay in a mixed use?
I think everything that we would talk about in both the high density and commercial zones. In fact, this is the way the general plan narrative reads. All of the different zoning districts are appropriate in the mist, mixed use designation. I, I wonder how much to, to push the envelope on this, but the notice that we provided for the change is limited to the southern half of the parcel. So probably to be safest, if that's what you'd like us to do, then we should re-notice the proposal to include all of the property and just have that on your agenda next month and have a similar discussion. And we could certainly do that, we could even do that concurrently, um, you know, with a proposal. If something's ready by then, I say, I think that's absolutely an option, but certainly the right way to do it would be to.
Yeah.
Include all the property.
Which we could just table it and, and let you do that. I, I just, if it, if it's a plus to have that flexibility. Then they can bring presentations.
Certainly if you're, if you're willing to consider non-residential uses on the frontage, then I think that's, that's a good approach. If you don't want to consider non-residential uses on the frontage, then that's.
Well, it just seems like because of the water. Well, it just seems like because of the water and the issues and the history, that it will never be commercial.
We think that we can do, if you'll do what we're proposing tonight, we think we can do that.
Over, over a period of years, you could reroute the water, dry it up, and now.
So, the reason why I bring up the idea of mixed use is about five years ago, that was a hot topic in our, on our planning commission. And we talked about that for a long time. We went and looked at different mixed use examples in the area and viewed them on pictures and, um, a lot of the mixed use that we've done so far are simply a split of the property. This portion is going to be residential, this portion is commercial, which is exactly what you have painted a picture of. So, so far in Spanish Fork, what you are showing us is a mixed use project. So we're not doing anything to change what you're proposing except for putting it in a more, what fits with what's in our community already. The thing is, is what you've described here is the potential for a unique possibility. And by just saying commercial and residential, I feel like you're limiting your possibilities by saying mixed use.
But can I ask something? From our standpoint, we would, you know, we're, we're trying to get this thing done before we get too far into spring. Would it be possible to approve the south half as proposed and then we, we'll come back with the north?
But I don't think it matters. If we make it mixed use, you can move forward.
Yeah, but we don't, we're another month out for your next meeting.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Dave doesn't feel comfortable.
I see what you're saying.
That's my point is, if we were to just go forward as it is and, and have a discussion with you about doing the north, because the north is dead in the water until that, not to use that word, but it is, it's not going anywhere.
That's a pun.
It's not going anywhere unless that work is done. But if we were to go forward as we presented it, you know, as we proposed it, then we can go forward and hopefully we're back on your next agenda with the, with the letter from the core. And then we would just go forward and try to get, we would, we would come in the next one and if we would like, we, we're not opposed to moving, trying to rezone that or re-general plan the north end and that, we're not opposed to that, it's just we would prefer not to have any more delays on the south.
Right.
This, the wetland work has taken a very long time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Dave, I saw a question. Since the Stinging Bee Land and Livestock sent this letter now, rather than waiting until the zoning to address it, their six-foot fence would be an obvious going to happen?
It's going to happen anyway.
Because that's a requirement. But the roadway and the concern about, well, the lighting wouldn't be a concern because now the lighting won't be along a road, but the potential for changing anything before they start a plat or anything like that, the road is where it's going to be. They're not thinking about changing the road or anything like that between the.
I'll let them answer that. This is the first time they've seen that as well, so if they had any ability.
Would there be any reason that you could see why a road would be of value there instead of where it's at? I just, since they sent this letter, I just want to address it today, even though it may not be the main.
Frankly, I think potentially, but we sort of set something in motion with this project here. So for example, if, if there were a road that potentially someday could, could be shared along that southern property line and provide access for development, you know, both from the south and the north, I think that probably makes a lot of sense. And oftentimes, we try to do that just by way of providing good access to different properties. Now, I don't necessarily understand that the B-singers want to develop anytime soon. Doesn't seem like that from what we're reading tonight. So I'm not sure that that's their motivation, but also we kind of interrupted that opportunity given how this project was approved. I don't know if they're looking just maybe to use that road as kind of a, to give them some space between what they're doing and neighbors. And just sort of relative to, I think what their maybe underlying concerns are about the proposed change. I think one appropriate way to look at it, and this wouldn't make them feel necessarily more comfortable, but I would, I would categorize the impact that this property would have if it were to develop commercially, you know, without changing the general plan, you know, if that just proceeded, as probably being higher on the neighbors than if it developed with townhomes and particularly with the alley kind of designed to where you're probably not going to have a lot of streetlights on that southern side with the road, you know, going maybe more through the middle of the property that we're talking about and some of those kinds of things. So, again, I suspect that might not make them feel any more comfortable, but.
Well, I kind of get the feeling that they feel a little bit concerned about the future tenants not enjoying being neighbors to them.
Yeah.
And they don't want that to be the case either, so.
Can I say something about that? In Lehigh, you've got farms all over. And one of the things they've required is when they buy something, they're given a disclosure that they have to acknowledge that, look, you're, you're purchasing a home and potentially, I mean, you've got mink farms that don't smell well at all, you've got them in the middle there, and they're all required to recognize that they're purchasing a home in areas of reform. And we're not opposed to including that, that, okay, here, you're buying a home here, this is part of your notification, part of the HOA, there are ongoing agriculture operations in the vicinity, do not, you know, don't bother calling the city, don't bother calling anybody else, you chose to live here, it's here.
Okay. Good point. Does commissioners, uh, have any motivation to make a motion on this? Do you feel like you've had your questions answered?
I guess my only question at this point, I think it's a good use of the land and I, I think it's a good project. When you look at the ground, it needs to be utilized, it's a good use. My question would be, uh, for us tonight, it, it sounds like the best option may be just to do the south as it is proposed and then come back when it's time to take a look at the north side along the road and consider that again. Is that, is that what staff is proposing as well?
I guess my comment on that simply for tonight, and I certainly appreciate the dialogue that you've had about maybe expanding to include some additional land, and I appreciate Mr. Snyder being here, I start to call him my conscience a little bit, and I think he's doing a good job of helping keep us on the right track. Clearly, if you want to include anything beyond what we've noticed for tonight, we should simply re-notice that and go through that process. So, that's my only thought, relative to what you might want to consider, you know, whether it's mixed use or all high-density or anything like that.
Well, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with, with including the other property there that's a triangle piece without consulting them and, and finding out, you know, the comment was made that, you know, they thought that high-density would be the best, you know, short-term thing that they would have there. And so I wouldn't want to paint them into a box that they haven't had input into yet. And so it seems to me like if we just consider what has been proposed tonight, that's the best thing to do tonight. It doesn't do anything to preclude a change here or here. And we go forward, if the applicant is ready to go forward and come to the city with their proposals to be considered, I, I think that we can move forward with this south half, if that's, if that's the recommendation from staff and from the DRC.
That is the recommendation that we made.
Is this a recommendation or approval?
Recommendation.
So I'll make a recommendation that we approve the general plan amendment to make just the portion that's been discussed designated as urban density or high-density? Which one are we looking for here?
High is our recommendation.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, uh, high-density.
I second that. Okay, go to first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That was a long way around, wasn't it?
It's a good discussion, that's all right. All right, that is everything on the agenda. We've got some other agenda items. First of all, I'd like to give Commissioner Argyle, you had a couple of questions, Dave, for you, so I'll let Mr. Argyle talk about that.
Just my questions are just follow-up from prior meetings and just seeing how things are coming along with the accessory apartment ideas and plans there. If you could just give us an update, 30 seconds, a minute?
I want to take more than a minute.
Okay.
So, if you don't mind, we've got a rundown on several different things that I'd like to go through.
Okay.
Because we have some other here that want to talk about some other things, do you mind if we?
No, let's do them first.
Do them first and then we'll come back. So.
That'd be just fine.
But I appreciate that.
Okay. He's got early bedtime, I think, John does. You're up at four.
You've got to sleep sometime.
So, 400 East, just south of 400 North, we drove by the property a couple of months ago, back when I was probably still wearing shorts outside and that kind of a thing. We've seen a couple of different development proposals, talked about some amendments to Title 15 tonight that, among other things, would make it so that they could put a building about 15 feet off of the sidewalk here, at least they can propose that and have you consider that. Another thing we talked about, I mentioned, was the idea that if the council approves those changes, they can have a six-unit townhome building right here that would front on to 400 East. Total of 10 units, so this is approaching 12 units to the acre.
Yeah, how many acres is this, Dave?
Point eight, basically, so about eight tenths of an acre, in essence. We've looked at this layout before and we have some images of proposed building elevations that the applicants would like to consider. Incidentally, these are the fronts of the units, so driveway, garages in the back, almost in kind of an alley sort of a fashion. Not sure what's going to come up next here.
Yeah, you have to go, go around the horn again.
Yeah, wait, can you, can you make me try to?
Yeah.
But really, any thoughts, concerns? Again, these are the elevations that the applicants are proposing that we consider. This is just incidentally, hey, we'd like to get your thoughts, so you won't be held to anything that you say tonight.
Looks nice.
It's really nice, that's, I'd get on that.
What does the ends look like? We're all about the street, the street view. The front looks fantastic. Can you make each one of those ends look like that?
Here is the yellow.
No, the, the ends are just, are just flat ends.
We don't like flat ends. Oh, serious, if we, we want to broke up with some different construction standards or not, materials or some build-outs.
Is this the painted ladies in San Francisco?
Yes, in fact, yes, that's, that's some of what it's, what we're, what we're going after, exactly that.
Painted ladies?
Then there was a.
Okay, I'll pull up a picture.
I'll Google it.
Now it's think it is.
So I have a, I have a question. This is just more.
Time out, do we need to have them come up in this segment?
Oh yeah, come on up.
Just for the benefit of our viewers.
And maybe say who you are, since everybody likes to know who we are.
Okay, I'm John Smiley and, and we're, we're considering doing this, this 10-unit townhome project on, there you go, there's the painted lady, there you go, in, on, on Fourth East.
So, I just have a, I mean, it's kind of a random question, just because of my own experience and what I'm learning about townhomes and maybe what we would consider condos, maybe the difference between them, I don't know. But one thing that someone else, I don't, I don't remember every person's name, had talked about is the challenges of so much stairs being such a challenge to a lot of people. And, um, so one thought that I had is that we recently visited a place that has the one, I'm going to call them condos instead of townhomes. One's on this level and then the second one is on top. And so instead of living up and down in your own townhome, you live all in one level and then people live above you, and yet there are separate entrances. Do you know what I'm, do you understand what I'm talking about? And I don't, we don't have anything like that that I know in Spanish Fork. And yet it seems like for some people who have problems with stairs and other things, these, so many townhomes that are a split type of living provide a lot of challenges and what are our, you know, why are so many builders, I guess, I'm putting you on the spot, so interested in those type of homes instead of more of those, everybody's on, you know, your bedrooms and everything are all on one floor, and then someone else owns their home above you. I, just looking for your thoughts on why these are so much more popular when they create so many stairs and challenges for maybe so many people versus the other, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Obviously, the people, the, the, the people that buy a townhome don't have issues with stairs.
I live there.
And, and so those, and, and so, um, I, I don't know for everybody else, we're, we're, we, we would be marketing to that, to that first-time homebuyer that typically doesn't have problems with stairs. I don't have any stairs and, I mean, I have a Rambler, you know, I live in a Rambler. I don't like to do stairs. But I, I'm not a first-time homebuyer either, so, so, so I.
Is there a value difference, do you think?
I, I don't know that it, I don't know that it costs any more or less to, to, to build, to, to, to build that. It, I think it, it's a bit of a, it's a bit, it's a bit of a, of a negative to think somebody else lives above you, right, in, 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 you know, and, and, and the more urban you get, the more accepting you are of that. But, but right now, I, I, you know, people in our town are saying, you know what, I want to know that I'm up here, not, not somebody else.
I think John, I think that's.
From what I've understood, it's marketability of.
It's a little more marketable.
Nobody lives below.
Or above me.
It is a sound issue.
Yeah.
People who live in townhomes and condos have a common wall all the time, and the biggest complaint you hear about the neighbors is the noise through that barrier. And if you build directly above, even the best construction, you may hear somebody walking.
Right.
One room to the next, plus if you're, if you're younger, there may be a little bit of noise that will be a little bit more transient between floors rather than through a wall.
Right, right.
And our first units that always sell are the end units because we only deal with one wall instead of two.
It's true.
What do you got here?
Well, thanks, I just wanted.
It's you?
Take your brain a minute.
It's in Springville. There's one unit on the bottom here and then there's stairs that go up to the second story over here.
So that is.
Are they really nice?
Yeah, there's probably 50 units. Here, I can bring it to the, that's all these, they're all the same unit.
So they're more of a condo versus a town? What's that?
You don't own the individual piece of ground underneath you.
That's the other thing, is there's a lot more appreciation for an owner who owns the piece of ground underneath, underneath his rather than, rather than just a condo unit.
You don't show a footprint on a townhome that you don't own a condo.
Yes and no. I've, I own one in here and my values are the same values as townhomes and Black Horse over here on, off Expressway, so.
Good.
I don't think buyers look for that, but.
Okay.
So, on your proposal here, John, on the, the sides and the backs, which ones are going to be facing the road? Because that'll be an issue for us later. Can you bring that back up?
Just to the front.
Yeah, that.
Those are private drives.
Front six.
We've, so, so that's, that, that's a six plex that goes all the way across the front.
Where's the sides going to be?
That's on 400 East.
Paris into the roads, where's, is there a road?
So here.
Is there a road across here? You just got nails over here.
Those are homes.
And homes over here, too?
Yes.
So then the safety is kind of a big deal.
Well, you'd see it from here.
Oh, okay.
If we could just, we, we kind of like the little ends dressed up a little bit, so it's just on a flat, stuck a wall.
Or something else, you can put like just a pop-out on there.
Right, pop-out window.
Or siding or something.
Yeah, whatever you've done to the front, maybe you carry a little bit of that theme around.
John, Kevin, not do it any other way.
Dave, I'm so surprised you didn't already warn them about this.
I think there were a few discussions.
This has been a discussion.
That's it, just dress it up a little bit.
Okay.
You're going to dress this neighborhood up a whole bunch with this plan. I mean, it really will look nice.
Well, I'll say. It will. It'll look nice.
And, and, and so we're just, like I say, the main, our, our main concern was up in, with the Title 15, you've approved that, that we get to have a, that, that we can put a six-plex along here. And that was kind of our whole goal here, was to set a tone for the whole project by, by putting that, by, by lining that whole street with, with those, with, with those that look like the painted ladies and stuff.
So prior to the Ti, the Title 15 thing that we recommended, what would have this not been?
And then just limit...
Four, four on the front and four on the back.
They could have maybe done...
We could have done a duplex.
Yeah.
So you could do four units, then two units.
Okay.
Could have done six together.
Okay.
So, we, we, we did it and we still fit ten on there, but we didn't like it nearly as well. We didn't end up with a, with a, with a park area here. We didn't end, we didn't end up covering, plastering the whole road with that. That's what, that's what we really like, is the fact that that's, that's the view of this project that everybody's going to have right there.
Yep.
So, we like that.
Go back to the floor plan or to the plot plan of the six and the four.
The landscape plan?
Yeah, well, that plan.
Yeah.
So, in this case, the garages are all in the back.
Yep.
However, I, I guess the question I have with this is that very few people will ever see the front of those four that are in the back. The only way you'll ever see that is if you pull into the, into those parking places there or in the park area.
And we're planning...
Just wonder if you might, you know, the front of them look nice to me and then landscaping and everything looks good. I just wonder if they could be configured a little bit better so that the only thing you see when you pull into this, this street that comes into both of them, the road, will be the garage doors. And it'd be...
Right here?
Yeah.
If you come in, you'll see the garage doors.
Come in there and those, yeah, those four units, all you'll see is the doors. And I just don't, you know, I don't know if you could flip those and move the park on the other side, you know, flip the whole thing or something. I, I don't know. That's a question.
More difficult simply for turning radiuses and backing in and out of safety, things like that.
May not be possible.
Flip that unit, then they're coming down, making a ninety turn behind the six and then making another turn to get in there. So your idea, I see it, it just makes it a lot more difficult for, for navigating a vehicle.
And, and so we can enjoy the fronts of these, we're going to start having planning and zoning meetings in this park.
And you will provide, and you'll provide refreshments?
Yes, yes. So all the snow you can melt.
So on those four, I guess if, if it doesn't make sense to do something like that, then is there something that helps with the view of the garage doors? I, I think we've talked quite a little bit about garage doors not being very appealing to anybody.
From this angle here, is that what you're worried about, John?
Yes, that's what I'm hearing.
Just thinking about an alley.
Just...
The thing, you have to put a six-foot fence along there, too.
Yeah.
I really don't think you're ever going to see those.
No, the only people that are going to see them is the residents.
Is the, the upper level will be dressed up a bit, nice with the window and...
The, I mean, obviously, where the garage door is is just a flat, yeah, just flat. Up above, the, the upper level go, I mean, there's a shed, you know, a shed roof there and then, and then there's a pop-out up, up, up there as well.
Because I think your architecture, I think that's why we're just, you want architecture that looks appealing and we're just big on that right now.
And, and so do we. That's, that's why we've...
Break it up with colors, maybe?
These are a lot, these are probably some of the nicest around the world. There's probably more architecture involved in these than any of the others.
But I do think that the four that will buy those will like it because they're facing the park.
Right.
I think people will really like that.
That's one thing I like about this layout.
Yeah, nobody's going to really see these, but you do get to walk out your front door and, and, and into here.
Yeah, people will like that.
So...
Some kid's going to hit a baseball through your window.
Well, I'm hoping. That, that, that means at least somebody's out there using that.
Yeah, bet. I like it.
Okay.
That'll fly.
Any, any other questions for me?
All in favor?
See you next month, okay?
Looks a lot different than the ba, than the drive-in or the underground garage.
Have you started talking to the...
I kind of like that.
...divers or anything yet about your idea? Have you gotten any thoughts from the people?
We've, I've talked with all three of, all three of these neighbors. We've got to get some new batteries in this one. And one, and one over here.
And they all are favorable?
And, and they're, they're all considering it an upgrade. You know, I mean, I, I think, you know. I just knocked it down, the two houses there is, is going to be an upgrade.
A huge upgrade.
But yes, we have been.
Have you had a neighborhood meeting?
No. No, not until we got, not until we figured out whether we were really going to be able to do a six-plex and things like that.
So the next steps for these gentlemen would be, hold the neighborhood meeting and finish making any final adjustments to the plot that are necessary.
Some additional elevation views would be helpful. Additional elevation views.
They're all three bedroom.
Did you have one that shows the floor plan?
I know.
I thought when you were going through, there was what's on the main floor and what's on the second floor. There you go. So no bedroom on the, on the first floor, all three upstairs.
Yep.
Your projects all look good, John. You do good work.
Thanks.
In the community.
Thanks.
Yep.
So keep it up. Two and a half, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So neighborhood meeting, final adjustments to plans, then DRC meeting.
And some elevations on the...
That'll be part of, let's say, the final...
Okay.
Plan additions. Then we schedule it for a public hearing with you.
Okay.
On the infill overlay and the change to the R3 zone. That could happen February, but you guys probably have to cook pretty quick to make that happen. If not, then I would guess March, fairly soon. Be back before, yeah.
Probably March by the time we, yeah.
That's...
Sounds good.
Great. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Let's do the easy one next, that Parkway Village project.
Oh, yes, yes. Taking the evidence, are you? Let's see, there was a cell tower location, outdoor storage. Chris Childs.
Let's do Chris Childs next.
Okay. Since he's been so patient.
Yep. Do appreciate that. You've seen this before. This is express, sorry, this is State Road 51. This is Spanish Fork Parkway.
VHS to 10A.
Just up further north than where we were.
Exactly, yeah. In fact, Commissioner Tag and Commissioner Tanner were kind enough to give us some of their time here, oh, a month and a half or so ago, where we looked at a slightly different iteration of this. Do you want to maybe just talk about some of the changes that have occurred from that iteration to this one? And then I think you want to talk about parking and garage requirements specifically and maybe a wall issue as well. So we'd like to get your feedback on three components of this, really from my perspective with the idea, and I'll let Chris correct me if he sees it differently. But I think this potentially is on a same, on the same potential kind of timeframe as the project that we just looked at. So maybe February or March, we're looking at public hearings on zoning. In this case, it'd be master plan development with that for this apartment development here. Be the first R4 project that we have in the city and...
So, and we, we have had multiple iterations of this, you know, trying to work out something that is economically feasible to produce, plus kind of gives you the look that, that... The feedback I've gotten is what we'd like to see in Spanish Fork. So we've, we've incorporated some, some, under, so any of these units that have a twenty, they have garages underneath the building. And these would be twelve garages per building of these units with twenty. The ones with, that show twenty-four, we've got, we've got some garages around the perimeter of the project that would serve most of these. And then, then open parking. Now, this, this particular building is a little bit unique in that it's three stories on this side of the, of the project and it's four stories on this side. Okay, so the streetscape, this is the city street coming through the project right there, and then also this is a city street around here. So what we've tried to do is we've tried to, to protect that urban streetscape with the design and made it so that the parking is somewhat hidden, similar to other projects that, you know, you've expressed that you felt like had a good feel from the street. So anyway, this, but, so, so the way this one would work is, you know, the streetscape, you'd have a four-story building, but we still would not put elevators in here because people would tend to access it from this side. And so there would only be, there would be six units at ground level here that they would come in from this side and actually go downstairs for these, for the six units on this side. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah. What about parking for that one? Is it just...
It would be in this, in this location.
Exposed, it's not covered.
The, the changes from the last iteration of this is, as I've worked through, you know, this, these concepts with, you know, development companies and apartment, you know, companies. I've talked to multiple very experienced apartment builders as well as consultant, Western Family or Western States Multi-Family, which is a, you know, one of the most experienced. He did our market study for us and... So that, you know, we're, we're, we are, you know, trying to come up with something here that will, you know, appeal, you know, satisfy the need for, for a little bit higher density apartments. But the change was is that they said that we really had to get this clubhouse out to where our most visual area was. So we had the clubhouse back here on the last iteration and that was, that was something that, you know, universally was, they said, you know, get it, get it out here where people can see the swimming pool as they drive by, they can see the clubhouse. They can drive right, this is the entrance to the project right here. They can, you know, pull right into the clubhouse right there. And we also designed it so you can come around here to the back and we've got parking here, you know, for where we've got playgrounds and the pool and that kind of thing. Plus, we have, we wanted to maximize the, the units that could actually look out onto some of these amenities. And so we, we worked to get this building in right here. So we feel like from a marketing standpoint and to be able to, you know, have the offices to rent the units and that kind of thing, this was, this was essential from the feedback that I got. So that's why we made the, the change from the last iteration to this one. We're trying to maintain a parking ratio that our consultants that have done the studies say that, you know, about 1.6 spaces per unit is adequate for this type of a development. The, and that doesn't take into consideration any possible street parking. The, and then also we're planning on allowing some guest parking and overflow parking in this commercial area. So we, we'd be getting some multi-use along here, so that would also, if there was overflow, we can have guests parking in the evening, you know, on, on the commercial part of this project, which is, you know, an advantage that we have that most other projects would not have.
Would you allow overnight parking in those parks?
Yeah, but we wouldn't, we'd probably, if it's, we, we'd, we'd have restrictions that would impact it a little bit during the day if, you know, if it was taking up the parking that we needed for the commercial building. So we'd have some, we'd, we'd put together, you know, some rules and stuff so that it didn't become a problem to the tenants, you know, or the owners in these professional office condominiums.
You just don't want someone to just park the car and leave it for six years?
We are not going to let that happen.
Okay.
Absolutely would not let that happen. It'd be like, you know, guest parking overnight or overflow for short, you know, we, we would definitely limit this to very short-term parking, yep, and be able to enforce that. So, so we, we're, we're at, you know, this is at about seventeen units the acre. We have 184 garages, which is a, I don't know what that percentage is, but it's, you know, it's like seven, somebody want to do the math on that really quick?
Carry the one.
But, and we're, you know, we're a little below what the maximum density would be, but in order to, you know, this is kind of a product that's both front-loaded and rear-loaded. And so we end up with a lot of asphalt with this type of a design, which is, you know, fairly expensive to build, but it also, you know, limits the, you know, we just, you know, without going any taller, we can't fit any more units in. And in the, the iteration before that, where we had a podium-style construction, I don't know if you guys remember looking at that one, probably did. I, that just, the rents in, in Spanish Fork, it's, you know, in Provo, you could do something like that. They said the rents would have to be about another sixty cents a square foot to justify that in Spanish Fork. And that was, you know, the feedback I got from a lot of professionals.
Are these going to be condos for sale?
No, these are going to be apartments for rent.
All of them for rent? No owner?
At least that's, that's the vision I have right now, you know, I mean, I, I don't suppose that'll change, but that's, that's what we're shooting for.
And that's what we don't have right now.
So, so could someone buy one and rent it out? No, it'll all be managed through...
Yeah, it'll all, it'll all be managed by one company.
Is that different than the one in Springville, that big project in Springville in the west? Same, same concept?
Exactly.
Okay. I thought them people actually owned and bought those. It's not the case. Okay.
We're talking about outlook apartments, correct?
The ones...
Yes.
On Main Street, just on the border of Spanish Fork?
Yeah. The ones that Michael owns one in is, you know, that's owner, that's condominium ownership, but, yeah.
What should be the configuration? One bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, a combo?
We'll have a mix. We'll have about forty percent, I think it's, I think the mix is, is twenty percent one bedroom, forty percent two and forty percent three bedrooms is what, is what has been recommended.
One bed, or one bath, two baths?
There'll be a mix. Yeah, there'll be a mix, mix in that as well, yeah.
So the, the tall unit, the number forty-two there, what will be the height of that?
Depends on where you measure from.
What's our...
It's going to be eight feet taller from this side than it will be from that side.
Right.
On either side would be more than forty-five.
What's that?
On either side would be more than forty-five.
I think forty-five.
I think, I don't know, likely.
By how much, you want to guess?
You go, let me get back to you on that. I'll have the architect.
Since it's four stories, it could be, could be, depends on what the, what the roof style is.
Right.
Yeah.
Mike, can you pull up the city view and show us where this is at from the city view map and also what it looks like right now for the master plan?
Right here.
So give me a reference point.
Highway 51 to Springville and this is Spanish Fork Parkway is where we're moving the trash out here. Walmart's down here.
Walmart's down there. Walmart's down there by Walmart.
Sure, the new housing's going in across the street.
New housing right there.
So that's back behind Canyon Creek kind of thing, right? Where's the IHC Hospital going in? Right there? Okay. This is...
Well, my bees.
Lowe's is here.
You're talking right in this area?
Yes.
What's the general plan there? Is that what your question was, Glenn?
Yeah, so what's the general plan for that right now? So we're going to be moving it from this to our new...
Oh, that we've already, that we've already changed the zone to, yeah, so.
So it's next to, it's next to us in there. It will play the new C4.
R4.
R4, yeah. So that red sack is the commercial out front, this white part.
Man, it looks nice, Chris. Oh, really, you've...
It'd be really nice.
Some of the things you just mentioned... Basketball court to organize a, a, a good tournament there. Yeah. Well, that's another place we can have these planning commission meetings. Isn't there a patio there with the barbecue and stuff?
Clubhouse.
Well, we had a couple offers already. Couple smokers out.
I think one, one thing I'd just like to, like to throw out there, if you, so this, this area is, is the city landfill right now.
Yes.
And we've got this road going along here and so we're going to end up with, with kind of a park area right here. And we've got this road going along here, and so we're gonna end up with, with kind of a park area right here. But I think we ought to think about, you know, incorporating some additional park area. You know, I mean, there's not a whole lot else we can do about that, but, uh, cause we're gonna have, if you look at the commercial, I've got quite a bit of parking right here. Um, and, you know, I think, you know, just, just to kinda think outside the box a little bit, I think expanding this area.
Yeah.
And, you know, using some of that land that the city owns might be a, if there's any way we can make that happen, I think that would be beneficial to not only, it would just be beneficial to the whole area, so. And what else are you gonna do with it, you know?
Right. How, how wide of a, an area is that, east-west?
This, that's pretty wide, that whole section across there, you mean?
Well.
From Lowe's to, I mean, you got, Lowe's comes out into here now, right?
A little bit, not that much. I mean, you got a thousand feet.
Oh, so we're talking, so you're talking about a park park in there or at least a portion?
You know, I would like to see, obviously, if, if we're gonna put some really nice professional offices here, IHC's over here, you know. We gotta, this, this has gotta look good, you know, and so there's gotta be some kinda landscaping going along here and then, you know, I'd like to see it kinda go at a triangle. So it kind of incorporates into, you know, what we're doing right here, if, you know, if that's.
Complement each other.
Yeah.
Yep. I really li- I really like the.
Yeah, probably is, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Planting seeds.
Yeah, just exactly, that's, I just kinda maybe plant a seed right there, but.
I like the street view, how, how.
I do too.
If, if you wanted to just drive through and see what it looks like, it's gonna look nice. But for the people that live there, they know what they gotta do, they gotta turn off and go around. Go, pull that back up if you would a little bit.
Which one?
The, his, that one. Yeah. You know, for people just driving through and wondering what it's all about, it's gonna be very nice view for them.
Really, it's being really clean.
Somebody lives here, they're gonna come through, now all your cars are back here, people have no business back here unless they live there.
And what you're describing, that's the idea.
Yeah.
That's the.
Mm-hmm. You've got, you've done some good work with the con- consulting and you got to, you wanna make this successful.
I mean, I, I, I haven't been on this longer than two years, probably two and a half years, and we've done, this is like the fifth iteration. You know, with, and, you know, we've had consultants looking at it, and two different architects, and so we're.
A project you done in, uh, Springville that's on their main corridor there, I mean, that looks nice, them office buildings. And that's, I, I suspect you're gonna have that kind of a theme here where it's, it's nice. That's what we want in this town, that's good. And this is gonna be a Maverick right here. Seven eleven, let's go through that again.
I think the Mavericks actually want a little more land, that's 1.2 acres right there.
Yeah.
So, uh, but, but it, you know, once this road connects up to Mapleton.
That is the road that is gonna be the main corridor there.
That is the corridor.
Spanish Fork Parkway, it's gonna, it's gonna, I mean, that's gonna be the corridor for people to come from eastern Spanish Fork and, um, south, southern Mapleton.
Perfect place for this high density.
Is where they're gonna be building.
No, no neighbors, can you imagine the public hearing on this?
Yeah.
It'll look like this.
You're just hoping, aren't you?
Ah, somebody.
He's so nice.
Very nice.
Okay, I had to jump up, I know Brandon wants to be the wet blanket, but, uh, my favorite thing, so here I am. Talked about a couple of things that we need to change in the R4 zone in order for this plan to be approved. I'm just looking to get hopefully direction from you guys, because if you're comfortable with it, we'll go ahead and get started on some amendment language. And get that teed up so that we'd have a Title XV Amendment proposal on your agenda here sometime soon and we can do what, uh, Chris has shown here. Parking, talked about that, 2.5 spaces per unit off-street currently is the requirement for projects in the R4 zone. Um, we spent a lot of time when we were developing the R4 zone, discussing parking, what the requirement should be and so forth. What Chris has said, relative to projects like this having typically significantly less than 2.5 spaces per unit absolutely is true. Um, also. Projects, neighborhoods park heavily in Spanish Fork, meaning we seem to require more parking than what people get by with in other communities. And I can't totally explain that, but you can go look at different places I can tell you to look at right now throughout the community. Where there's spillover parking on the streets like Candy Road and different things like that, and it's just, that's part of who we are, I think. But, and I appreciate the way that Chris described some things, if you can go back to just his, his layout, Mike. Um, I think this is a great project to cut our teeth on, particularly relative to parking because if there's a parking deficiency. We have an opportunity to build in a relief valve from day one. And like Chris said, there is parking adjacent to the site. Um, the uses that we'd anticipate in the office buildings typically have their peak parking hours well before, you know, six or seven o'clock at night. Which is when you typically start to hit your peak parking demand in a project like this. So the suggestion simply would be from a code perspective, uh, to write something in to the zone. That would conceivably allow for some off, excuse me, off-site parking. To count towards meeting the parking requirement. So, along with an allowance that I think we conceivably could give for some on-street available parking that comes with this particular kinda model. Um, if, for example, eighty spaces were set aside in the professional office project, that's kinda overflow parking for the apartments. And, and I try to be really conservative, just in eyeballing how many spaces might be created if even physically. We went out and physically striped parallel parking on the street, which part of the beauty of this design, I think also is that on-street parking happens. And people park, you know, conceivably right out in front of their units and things like that, but if we counted.
About this street here.
Exactly, yeah. If we counted seventy, if there were seventy spaces created there and eighty over in the, uh. Office part of the development, then we'd be at 2.5 spaces per unit. So it'd just maybe be a different matter of perspective in looking at it. Um, and we wouldn't even have to get into, you know, the issue of what's the right number, we could demonstrate that that's available and, and just move on from there. So that's a thought. Garages is another issue. Currently, we require, um, point eight garage spaces per unit, or we require that there be a garage available for eighty percent of the units in a development. Chris is at about sixty with this layout, sixty percent, so that's another change that.
What's the thought behind that, Dave? Why garages in an apartment complex?
To, as simply as an amenity. When we looked at projects, uh, when we developed the R4 zone, frankly, the projects that we liked the most all had garages. The eighty percent is just literally taken straight from an apartment project in Springville that we used as kind of a model. So they have eighty percent there and that's where we got that number from. So from our perspective, I think we could say it was somewhat arbitrary, you know, there wasn't necessarily any, any great science behind that. And partly because of that, I think it makes sense to, you know, maybe, uh, consider changing that as well. Um, but that's, that's just another thing, numbers-wise, that jumps out at me.
I think you're around sixty-five percent. You got.
I was wrong, but.
You got three fifty-two divided by five thirty-six, is that right?
No, it's three ten divided by one eighty-four.
Okay, okay.
The other way around, yeah, it's the other way around.
It's fifty-nine percent.
Okay, you're right. Okay.
Um, then the other thing is just the building height, right now is a forty-five foot maximum, and I'll tell ya. Forty-five for eighteen yards the acre, that probably is a little bit lower than, than it should be. So I don't have any qualms with maybe recommending that that change as well, and Chris, if you could help us understand maybe what a better number would be to use there.
Yeah, I would change it with the architect, I'm sure it's gonna, I mean, depend, you want, you know, usually you wanna put a pretty steep roof on these just to, you know, for the aesthetics of it. So somewhere around fifty-five to sixty, but it's probably gonna be more of a.
We could talk, yeah, more about that when we have a number to use.
If we do something big on a change on these kind of developments in the future, should we go look at a few of them, like there are ones that are going in American Fork and Lehigh and those areas? Should we look at how high they need to be?
We did that, yeah.
Okay, so that's.
Quite a bit of time up in that part of the world, yeah.
So how high, sixty-five then? Go from where we're at now, forty-five to sixty-five?
You know, I, I'd like to double-check the architect, but I think we're gonna be around fifty-five to sixty.
That's my thought.
At the very highest.
So move from where we are to.
On this building from the little side.
And honestly, if eighteen, if eighteen's are ceiling, then fifty-five should be plenty high. If we wanna go thirty, forty, that's probably when you need to really look at something higher than fifty-five, I think. You go stick frame construction up to four stories, is that right? So I think that's, can you picture anybody building anything differently in our market? It probably won't happen for a while.
Not for a while, not for a minute's go-up.
I don't recall why height was, I mean, I remember the garages and the parking, and I know we talked a lot about the architecture. I know Bruce was a lot involved with that. Do you recall why height was limited to forty-five?
I think it was our best estimation on what made sense, is how I'd put it, I think we were just trying to.
Probably cover three stories.
I think we were looking at three stories, right?
And you've added a story and.
Cause it seems like that was, seems like that was the discussion, was the point of limiting, limiting it to three stories. And that's why we set it at forty-five.
So maybe that's something to talk about too, you know, whether we have a concern with more than three.
I don't know why, I can't recall why.
Except for the one building, three stories.
It's almost the one that's.
And this is a bit of kinda like.
It's like a three and.
That's already measured from.
Right, that's what you said.
Uh, i- i- is it a safety concern? Uh, do we have a problem with fire trucks being able to get high enough to fight a fire on a? I mean, that, that's usually a concern of height is, uh, does Spanish Fork have a piece of equipment that could reach that?
I bet their ladder truck.
I think their ladder truck will, but I don't know.
Well, and the hospital's going to be.
It's gonna be more than forty-five.
I, I, that's, that's certainly worth checking on.
Something might fit in there.
But a forty-five foot tall building today would be close to the tallest in town, but it won't be in two years, or a fifty-five foot tall.
I think that might be a lot of what we were looking at, was just the heights of what we were seeing and what would be natural in our setting. Four stories would be kind of standout-ish, whereas, and if you're gonna put office buildings and other things are going in that have height, then it. Then it wouldn't be so weird, I guess.
What's your timeframe between the office buildings and these, Chris?
Um, I, I hope to get started on the office, on the phase one of the office buildings with, you know, we'd like to break down first thing in the spring. I would assume the following spring for the first phase of the apartments. So a year from the safe, it would be about the time that I'd like to see the, the breaking down.
How tall are those?
Yeah, that was, what's the height of the office buildings?
Cause they have like the turret things on them, right?
Yeah, taller, seat, the edge, that's, I'd have to pull out the plans, but then I'm sure.
So it won't be that.
They're gonna be taller too.
Forty-five feet.
Yeah.
So that won't be that.
Yeah, I would recommend, things we're gonna do, I'd be looking at what the competitors are doing, meaning the other cities, I don't know if that's the right word to put it. But other cities are having lots of apartments going in, I've just been noticing American Fork for some reason, I know Springville has a bunch coming in around their new Smiths. We had to know what people are building, what the market's demanding, what the market wants, whether they're four-story, three-story, and just get our. Plan in line with what's going on around us in the marketplace, what I'm trying to say.
Well, if you're to look at Vineyard, you'll see what Spanish Fork's gonna be like in five or ten years.
Vineyard's what you're thinking, the model of?
Well, I, I mean, I think that's ahead of us, we, you know, we tried to, we, we drew up the podium-style construction, it was four stories with elevators. It would've been really, you know, it would've, it was a really nice look. I was really excited about it until I met with the builders and developers, and, you know, we're just not ready for it. But that's the kinda thing you're seeing going in Vineyard.
Urban, future urban feel?
I think so, yeah.
And that's, we're talking about all the west side of I-15 down towards where Geneva was, right?
We spent some time down there and looked at a lot of those buildings.
We did, absolutely.
One that stood out to me was, uh, maybe you can do a street view of it, it's on Geneva Road and.
Just there south of the theater.
Theaters, yeah. Big overpass that they built, but there's, there's some buildings there that really caught our eye because they was multi-height.
There was some twos, some threes, some fours.
We did like that.
And it, it looked nice. Instead of, like the one in Springville, that's there, it's all, every one of them buildings are the same height and.
Yeah, and I actually think that forty-two unit building in there will actually, uh, help a little bit.
Help break that up a little bit.
And where it is, it's gonna be a subtle difference too, you know, because it's interior to the project and that sort of thing.
Is that something?
Your majesty feels. So the silver pass you're thinking?
Exactly.
It's further north.
Where was it from here?
Those, well, those are, I was thinking those were it, if that's.
It's by the movie theaters.
Wasn't closer to that.
I think that's it, with just the break in the roof lines, I was.
We did look at that, the backside had all those.
Yeah, no.
Uh, movie theater's here.
So maybe it's.
What's right in here? Or am I a long ways away?
Where's where, yeah, it's right there, that was the area, right there.
See much in, huh?
Yep.
Yeah, there you go, four stories there. Yeah, yeah, see how they got the different heights?
We're talking about height right there, they got the end comes down, it's like there and then four here and it breaks it up.
And if you go further to the right, it seems like there was some, uh. Yeah, it's an even lower one, it's maybe, that's clubhouse.
That's the clubhouse, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's got a lot of character though to it, I mean, are you thinking something like that?
It was, you know, that's more, you know, more of the podium style where you're.
Is it?
Getting the four stories with the elevators and some, some parking that they need.
I think you bring up an interesting challenge that we face because we, you know, when we created the R4. Our idea was we wanted, if we were gonna have apartments being built, which is in need and in demand. We wanted to make sure it was nice places that people were gonna take care of. And that's why the amenities were a must and the garages were a must. And the architecture had to be designed a certain way and we wanted to make sure that there were main streets that were roads. That look, gave the appearance of our city roads and not just parking stalls. And that's where it all came from, but you bring up an interesting problem, is that we're still just a little bit outside of the area where people would want to pay the price.
We're wanting a Cadillac.
For those things.
And people's gonna wanna buy a pedal.
I have this, this affordability.
Yeah, that's interesting.
And it's, it's, it's probably gonna become a moral problem before it gets bad.
Right, but the amenities, I think, and the garages and what you've created gives us a more realistic view of what can be expected. And you still held true to what we thought were very important elements, I thought, I think.
So you're thinking these buildings would be more of a representation of the current one in Springville, the outlook?
I, I'm, I'm, well, it'll, it'll be very similar to that, I'm hoping that we can do some architectural things to.
Dress it up?
Yeah, you know, I've got, I've got, I've got some really good people working with me and, you know, we're, we're, we're really still in, I mean. The next step is then we gotta actually design the buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Essentially, we're, we're moving along, but.
From the street view.
I guess I'm really good, you know, I, I have a lot of confidence in the people I'm working with.
Yeah, we really liked that though, so.
And that's the feel you've drawn in there, isn't it? With the city street going through it?
Yeah.
Very similar street cross-section, for example, so it would, I think setback would be similar. On the parking, nobody said you had big concerns with the idea of letting them count some off-site, count some on-site?
No, and I don't even think the parking star, the garage, does it even come garage? I don't even think that's.
Garage, same thing, I didn't hear that.
Storage units?
I feel like that's a big deal for apartments, in my opinion, but I'm just one out of the few.
Well, the way he's laid it out, again, the only people that's gonna see that is the people that live there, for the most part.
And that's the idea, totally?
As far as amenities go, well, that's gonna be up to him to make them rentable.
Well.
Some people want those and they'll pay more maybe for that.
Kind of. But Chris, honestly, those are the things that I know we need to tweak, based on what we're looking at here. I think you should, again, read the R4 zone, start to finish, because we do have some amenity criteria bolted into that. And I think we only want to bite the apple one time on changes, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna, well, I'll. We're gonna, we're gonna, well, yeah, I'll also have to do some math, and I think that the fact, you know, this, this type of a layout is really heavy on the asphalt, you know, and impervious. And so, you know, we may run into some trouble as far as, you know, the percentage of open space.
What we eyeballed from your plan, I think we're good.
Okay, well...
But that's, and that's another thing, if they could give us a number, we can, we can check, so...
Yeah, so we'll need to double check that. Yeah, I think that'll be, I really would like to just bite the apple one time.
And, I mean, maybe, timing, if you're looking to break ground spring of 2020, then there's not a huge rush, and we can...
I'd like to differ.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, this apartment complex has had financing. That can take easy a year.
Okay.
To get the financing lined up. And if I don't have, you know, I've gotta have design, I've gotta have appraisals, I gotta have, you know, the things I've gotta have to line up the financing and stuff.
Eight slots.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna take way longer. I would say that to start, a year from this spring, I mean, everything's really gonna have to click.
Okay. I feel like the next step for you is to give us a final draft of your plan that's refined, and then we can make sure that the code syncs up with that and go forward with the zone change and everything else, so...
So you're thinking sixty percent and one point seven five?
I'm thinking sixty percent and two point five, but we count some other parking to get to two point five. That's what I'm thinking.
Leave it.
Yeah, I, I think...
Let it be flexible.
It's a pretty big shortfall, though. There's over two hundred slots missing, right?
My math...
If you take three hundred and ten units times two point five, that's seven hundred and seventy-five parking stalls.
Are the garage, single garages?
And I think you've got five hundred and thirty-six.
I'm off, then, you're right.
Do you have concern about them being stored?
Are they single garages on all units?
Well, that's always a concern.
I think, I think that that's my only concern is, is that, for whatever reason, you're going to have a minimum of two vehicles per unit. Unless you've got a single person living there, and even he might have a pickup and a car. I mean, I haven't seen any, any development yet that has had enough parking, and so, Chris, I think that however you, however you... I, I think it would be important to have your plan in place on your parking in the commercial area.
Which is a lot.
And say, okay, this many will be available during what times, and all, and stuff like that. Because that, you know, that's...
I like the idea of the overflow in the commercial. I think it's very durable, with some rules and HOAs and stuff written. One thing about it is, all of that is on the north end, right? All that parking that we're talking about, and that's a big complex. That won't help the people in the south end. So, I mean, if we're gonna be firm on the two point five, there is quite a deficit.
There is, at the same time.
The outlook apartments in Springville is a two.
Is it a two?
Yeah, and that's not...
I think we're looking at what the rest of the market is.
And then you're...
You can talk to their HOA and see if they have parking complaints at Outlook at two.
Yeah.
It's a similar demographic.
So two point two with no on-street parking, and then figure that the visitors and stuff like that can do on-street parking?
And let me, so my guess is seventy on-street spaces. I was being really conservative and rough. I think there's likely quite a bit more that's available, even if we were, I'm picturing pretty liberally sized, parallel spaces and different things like that, so... It's comfortable to use, it gets used, and everything's like that, but...
That's something you can figure out.
Of that two thirty-nine, how we chip away at it.
Okay.
And where we land.
And maybe we're overstated, too, with the two point five.
Frankly, I think we are, but you guys know how much time we spent on parking, and frankly, and this is easy to forget, but politically, getting this zone adopted was a real challenge.
Well, that's why I feel like we need to be really careful just to... I mean, this took a lot of time.
Reduction in the standard at this point.
Right. Before it's hardly even been used yet.
And at the same time, we knew, I think we knew when we talked about the idea that
Might be some...
This is our best prediction of what we need and what makes sense, but when somebody comes in with a plan, we probably would need to make some adjustments.
So would it be worth our time? I mean, I mean, you might have an opinion on this, too. Being the people who spent hours and hours helping to recommend what that R4 was, and working with the city council, the time to meet, you know, all the, everybody, you know, concerns about such this.
I think a work session would be good.
That's why I'm wondering if a work session wouldn't be in order for the planning commission, and maybe even the city council invited, where this is our first R4, to be updated on all that work a previous group of people did, to update newer people as to why those were valued, why they were important, show the pictures, because I know we've created tons of information.
And we saw all that.
And to just bring everybody up to speed before we just start tearing it apart, and so we're being conscientious, I guess, in what we're doing.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. Maybe there's a little bit more here for Chris to do, to get closer to what is designed, and if the shortfalls exist for garages or parking stalls or whatever, and we do this work session, at least then we're all on the same page. This is our first project, here's what we wanted, here's as close as we can get to it. I think even some community communications, if that outlook is like fully rendered, and there was some dialogue and said, hey, yeah, this was two per unit, and there's not a lot of street parking, and it seems to be adequate, I think that's pretty good information than to just randomly say we need two point five.
But I think the city council's gonna have the same questions we're having, and so might as well just do it all together, update everybody
I think it's a good idea.
As to where, where this all came from, and then, I don't know.
Here's the real message that I wanna communicate, though, about what we're looking at here, which is that this thing complies with our R4 zone. Except for...
Things you just pointed out.
Things, yeah, so I don't wanna, like, talk about tearing it apart.
Right.
Or anything like that. I think this is massaging what we have a little bit, you know, maybe taking a rough edge off here and there versus a big overhaul. You know, maybe I'm biased in how I want, you know, that message communicated a little bit. That's my only hesitation with saying, hey, let's get together to talk about how to change the R4 zone, just...
I don't, I don't think I'm suggesting that. I'm feeling that, I don't know, I just feel like a lot of time went into it, and that... And I've probably done the same thing to poor people who put time into other things, as I just said, well, it's not that big of a deal, is it? But it was a big deal at the time, and like you said, there were a lot of people who weren't necessarily all in favor of this, and that's why we went to such lengths to create standards here, and then to just be like, well, does it matter that much? Well, it mattered to somebody at some point, but I agree a hundred percent. We're talking about minor changes, but it's not a bad idea for everybody to just be up to date, like, okay, that's what we wanted, perfect, let's make that happen. But I agree, it's, these aren't huge changes.
We'll talk maybe more about a work session in a minute, too, so, yeah. But I'm hearing, march on.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And I think, I think this is a great project to start that discussion on, because it's, it's, it's an upgraded project. It's something I think that we want to be able to point to when other developers come in and say, we would like to do something in Spanish Fork. And we can say, take a look, you know, this is a, this is a project that we like, and give, give that developer some, some insight into what they may be looking at. So this is a good place to start, where there's been a lot of work done already. There's been a lot of thought and effort put into it. We do have the component that will allow some off-site parking that could be worked out and stuff. This is, this is a good, this is a good place to start, but I kinda feel like it wouldn't hurt to have that work session just to talk about where we're at with that, and, you know, I, I don't know that it's gonna change anything other than just reinforce what we've talked about just now.
Last bit of soapboxing for me. I really appreciate Chris's effort and his patience. I think you probably knew you'd be kind of a guinea pig when you got into this, or pioneer.
Pioneer.
And at the same time, I think we communicated from the beginning that this has to be a home run for the city, or we won't see it happen again. We've gotta get it right for the first time, so it can be the model that we point at the people, too, so... Yeah, I certainly would admit that I'm hypersensitive about trying to make sure that we get it right. That's why we spent so much time, so... But I really appreciate Chris's effort and his time.
Yeah, sticking with it.
I think it's interesting, though, how much the housing demand and everything has changed in the, since we created the R4, because we knew there'd be a need for it, and how much the demand really exists, and, you know, I don't know, it's just interesting.
I'm glad, I'm, Chris, I'm glad you bring that up, because it's been in the works, and we haven't been able to attract these kind of builders and these kind of projects to our community in the past, and so we need to really figure it out and get the formula right, so we can get him here, get his here, and get others here.
Great. March on, I think was his words.
That was exciting. I'm excited to see an R4 come here, so...
Chris, one personal thing, I'd like to thank you for your efforts in helping line up the trip to Seattle a few weeks ago. That was a home run as well.
It was, yeah.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that was, that was a unique experience, and it was one that, you know, a lot of us may not have again, so that was a nice...
I don't know if you guys heard, but a week ago, our instrument approach into the Spanish Fork Airport was published, which is like a, I mean, it's just a huge milestone. So when it's, when there's inclement weather, we now have an official route that comes, and the same thing with departing, and so, you know, and the same thing with departing, and so, you know, we're, we're in the past, planes, we've had to fly the approach in a Provo, and then they had to, you know, go below the clouds and try and come over Spanish Fork, and so I got the opportunity today to fly that approach.
Test that?
In Detford's. It's, it was just really a treat.
That's cool.
We kinda, you know, that little airport is kinda...
It was, it was really interesting that we were able to take off from Spanish Fork at seven-thirty in the morning, and we touched down at five-thirty in the afternoon, back in Spanish Fork. And, you know, it, it was a cool thing, but the information that was gained was the real thing that, that made a big difference, and Chris helped make that happen, and I, and I appreciate your hard work in that regard. It was nice.
It was neat.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
So we've got a couple more things you wanna talk about, I believe. Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
That's great, yeah.
And so...
Okay. We were like, even if you had a mix of those and...
Go ahead and get started.
Is... You have the dynamic of youth, younger, and then you have the older people, too.
With the short agenda versus all younger than we're building now.
I'd be home in an hour and a half.
The other thought, Roco, come in, nail it one.
Yeah, right.
We're talking about the...
I says, no, really, what?
On the bottom, commercial on the top.
I lost.
Best intention, but I guarantee they sell it. That north part, or they just don't do anything?
We've got the cell tower, and now we know where it was stored.
So...
And that part will be so expensive to improve, those would be like...
On cell towers, really, the proposal that we've been asked to give, I can't even remember what company it was, feedback on, they've had some discussions with the Nevo School District about putting a cell tower on the Larson Elementary property. They've given us a couple of different sites just to say, hey, do you have a preference? I don't, and whether it's option A or B. Frankly, if we need another cell tower, for a few different reasons, I think a school might be a reasonably good place to, to put a tower. They've, so our code describes, for example, the need for cellphone companies with new towers to build them with some type of a stealth model in mind, so you've seen the disguised with kind of a tree look type of tower and that sort of thing before. So if we can look, Mike, at a couple of the images that we have for cell towers...
Nevo School District doesn't have a problem with it on their property?
I have not discussed that directly with them, but this is all contingent on them, you know.
Is it revenue for the school?
Pardon me?
Is it revenue for the school?
It is.
They lease the property?
Absolutely, yeah. So if we have the tree, let's look at the tree. So this is what...
River bottoms.
About Provo, right?
This is what we were shown. Actually, this isn't that one, this is an image that was given.
You know what that says to me?
I like it.
Climb me.
We'll look at the two.
Actually, that's way too high for them to get to that bottom branch, but...
They're, they're completely comfortable installing this, so...
That company that's doing the application, okay?
That look odd, though, I think.
So to boil it down as simply as...
Doesn't look any odder than the one on the right. That's what I said.
Let's look at, three versions, three, three of the images in kind of rapid succession here. Let's not even look at that. This is one way to disguise it.
You build a water town?
I just don't think any of these are very stealth.
Looks like a water tower.
So there's the tree, or there's this, and with one other tower, in the past, we've had somebody paint that galvanized material to make it a little more subdued visually.
Like camouflage?
Like camouflage. I think it's all one color, but...
Would you paint it blue then, since it's in the sky?
You know, kinda like, I mean, one comparison I would make, you see the, oftentimes, there are the really, really big steel power transmission line poles that are the core tin look versus the galvanized look. And the core tin ones, they do tin visually to kinda disappear when you get a certain distance away from them, just by way of blending into the, into the woodwork. But that...
That one?
I'm thinking those are huge ones, but this one, yeah, this one's pretty visually obtrusive, I would say.
That's...
That's hard to miss.
That, but that's not a cell tower.
Right?
Yeah, I don't know where a big cell tower is.
Yeah, I'm not talking about cell tower, I'm talking, like, for example, up in Draper, you see the big power lines that go across.
They've got, there's one right there.
Yeah, so this versus the galvanized tends to have more of a propensity to sort of blend in. But the question simply is, for those sites at Larson, do you have a preference?
For either site?
What's that?
For either, either site?
Well, first of all, for either site, but also, would you rather see this or a monopole of some kind?
I think on a school, it doesn't matter. The architecture of that school is, is bland anyway. I don't know, I mean, look what it's going next to.
Is that, oh, that's the street view, huh?
Pine trees stick out really bad right here.
That was my thought when I first saw it, honestly. So his first proposal was the pine tree. And our thought back was, well, maybe something else might be a little more discreet.
I think no matter what, it's just gonna look weird, so...
People are laughing. I'm not a pine tree fan.
I like the pine tree.
A fake pine tree fan, right?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a whole forest down, and one of them is a fake one, maybe, but what's the only one?
I was like, they're gonna put the pine tree, go put a bike tree.
It's like...
How about a pole and then plant trees around the pole?
Right, right.
Now that would be...
Thought about. Why don't they, like, that one they put in Provo that everyone always refers to, if they would've planted trees twenty years ago around that?
They'd be all the same size, right?
You'll put instructions in front of it.
I'm not hearing you really care.
I don't think so.
Okay, that's all we're looking for. If you change your minds, give me a call. I'll pass the call.
Wouldn't the school...
Okay, I do care. I don't want those ugly pine tree things. It really isn't a pine tree.
We've got one for no pine tree.
No pine tree.
Going.
I like, I like the pine tree.
We got two, one for pine tree, one for...
So we're back to, we don't care?
I, I think whatever the school district decides.
Let the owner decide.
Okay, I think we're still in, I don't care.
I don't care.
Slide pole. Slide pole. We can do a zip line off of it. Climb the tree.
I think they're trying to put them here to keep them as far away from any neighbors. That's the only thought I had, I don't know if you've had...
Okay.
The other discussions. Okay.
Everybody likes some shelter.
Yeah, I put it close to the school.
City shops, aerials. Thank you. Yep, even better. You knew right where we were talking.
I was forewarned by the wet blanket.
Thank you.
Back on those.
The wannabe wet blanket.
I still give you something.
Is this the storage units?
Yeah, outdoor storage units. This is storage unit.
You remember that discussion, and the folks that had that conversation, they're more serious now, or just as serious about trying to make the project work as they were then. Can you maybe give us a line to show us what two hundred and fifty feet looks like?
Well, I can tell you from I-15, you can't see it, period.
Yeah, I checked it out, you can't...
I've gone past in my truck that sits up a little bit, my wife's car, you can't, you, you can barely see the road over there. can barely see the road over there.
So the only question I have then is, is that the issue? Is it visibility or is there anything else to it? Is it the number of storage units that we already have along 200 East or something like that also that, that was part of the restriction?
Part of my problem that I had when we approved the next storage unit to the one that was there to begin with, and it went further to the north towards the Ford dealership. In my mind, here's what I vision. You've been to Cedar City? Okay, on the east side of I-15, between there and the school, I'm just thinking.
We don't want to look like that.
Storage units, storage units, storage units. And it's like, is that what we want? And yet, you know, there we are in a business, industrial park. That's an industrial park. But that was my, my feelings is, why do we have to have them right along the I-15 when you see other cities with, like what Linden's done and Pleasant Grove to where a lot of them structures, they look like you would approach them from the freeway side, but you don't. You park around back and go to them, but they look decent from the freeway. You know what I mean?
And I agree with that, but this particular piece you can't see.
You've got cement plants, you got, you, you got some stuff already there that's not that high.
Permanent.
What's that?
I was saying, storage units are very permanent, meaning, once it's storage units, they'll never be anything else. I mean, for a very long time versus the, this pit right here or some of these other things could be moved somewhere else and.
At some point, yeah.
And you know, so now you've got a freeway, a realistic freeway interchange right there that's going to start, you know, that's going to make this business and all the ones around here very attractive. And here we've created this. And now you're talking another one right here. That was my, the spirit of it. Okay?
Yeah. Let me add just a thought to that as well. And to be clear, I don't have strong feelings about this from a language perspective, but storage units don't do anything for a city. They don't generate enough property tax to amount to anything. And they don't provide jobs.
A lot of utilities.
So this is 12 acres of property that could be office warehouse or something like that, you know, to where maybe you've got a few hundred people employed there and instead we're putting storage units there, maybe employees and caretaker to, that is a missed opportunity for a city. So that probably is my bigger concern, even the aesthetics. That's what I think honestly, in storage units north of State for Carson, there were some unique things that influenced how that came about. I don't think we do that again there as a city. Because I think we view that land as being too valuable for storage units. And from that perspective, I'm not sure that I see this land all that much differently. So again, I don't have real strong feelings, but, you know, kind of like with the residential discussion earlier, you do have storage units. And of course, they love visibility, they love easy access and that sort of a thing. But people find them. They don't need that problem of sight, so.
Is, is this zone for, can, can storage units be built on this property and not change the zone?
Yes, they can be built in this zone, but currently they have to be farther than 250 feet from I-15.
From I-15.
That's the thing that would probably deter them from doing that.
Is it from the roadway or the right-of-way?
Uh, right-of-way.
Oh, jeez. They don't have any property then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a significant.
Well, i- is that for anything that would be built along there or only, or only storage sheds?
Just storage units and I think outdoor storage is also.
And that's what they want here is outdoor.
They don't want a combination.
Well, combination. The, the perimeter will be, will be storage units and then the interior will be.
That's how I remember it.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
If, if you guys, here's maybe a more clear way to fade and phrase the question. The folks that met with you, they're ready to propose a text amendment to change that 250-foot number. And I talked with them yesterday morning and I just thought, hey, before you go to that trouble, I'll be honest, the idea, you know, with the planning commission to see if it's going to be DOA or if it's worth processing. If you want to think about it further, I can tell them it's worth a shot. You can propose it and see where it ends up. Of course, the city council weighs in on it as well. If you don't want to consider it further, I don't think they would pursue it if I told them tomorrow that, the four planning commissioners that were there, I'll send them.
Help, help me if I'm remembering right on this. The guy that came and proposed it said that they originally wanted to purchase the property and build, and now the owner of the property wants to become a partner and retain ownership, at least partial ownership of the property.
That's my chat.
Who's, who's the owner of the property?
Evans.
Evans Greater in paving.
Okay.
Didn't we just barely come up with this?
Because you, you've got to consider that.
Yeah.
There's history.
Mr. Beninoff?
Is when we created this standard?
It's impossible not to.
Well, I'm sorry.
Right, because if, if you deny a use that that is zoned for.
Oh, absolutely.
You may, you may find yourself.
Oh, certainly.
In the same position that you were with the property to the south.
And for other reasons, we may be litigating with the owner of the property.
Anyway.
But relative to this question, I'm, I'm blocking that out.
Okay.
I just was wondering though, how long ago, when did we come up with this standard? Isn't that fairly recently that we came up with this?
Yeah.
I think it was right after we approved this second phase towards.
Well, it was, the timing synced up well with that, but it was the storage units actually that got built out at the mouth of the canyon. They're the ones that.
Barely got finished.
Yeah, but, um, here's exactly how it worked, I don't remember. We, we allowed storage units in the I-1 zone for a time and decided we didn't want to see any more storage units in our business park, in this real park. So we changed the zoning on that. And this property here was zoned I-1. These folks wanted to put storage units there and got enough support that that happened. But we changed the zoning to I-2 to allow for storage units there. And that's when that was changed from I-1 to I-2. But for 10 years, you couldn't do storage units on any I-1 zone property. And we got call after call after call. People wanted to do storage units. And eventually came up with the idea that, okay, if it's not prime frontage, so that's why I think it's, it's a thousand foot setback here, remember? So you can't put storage units within 1,000 feet, for example, of Main Street. And, oh, that's right, it's 1,000 feet of this.
Interchange.
200 feet of Main Street as well. So yeah, then we have a 250-feet limitation all along I-15, all the way through town, 250 feet of Chase the Two, Main Street and Zero L. So I guess that must not be on the list. I'm trying to find. So anyway, that's.
So where do we want storage units? Because apparently there is a demand for them by our citizens. So where do we put them?
On any, especially I-1 zone property that's set back 250 feet from Main Street.
Page 64.
Or I-15.
I, I, I can put it up.
So we do have plenty of areas for them to go where, okay.
Can you remind me what they were going to do? Weren't they going to do some office space with it?
Office right out on the front edge, kind of like.
Where it would be visible.
Yeah.
They were just kind of switching things around.
They're like the storage units.
Well, if, if this, if this is, is what we have to work with, I, you hold their feet to it. I don't know. Are you getting?
I, that's the way I feel. And, but I was a real big proponent of this visual in the first place. I, I had.
I didn't, I didn't vote for the other one. I didn't, I, I didn't, I didn't vote for the other one. But I think what Commissioner Argal says is maybe we kind of show them some areas on a map. I would think around the airport in certain areas would be a great place. And maybe we identify some places that's off this 250 feet off of Main Street to where it's not a reflection of what people drive by and remember Spanish Fork Four. I'd be careful about the airport because the airport has the potential for a lot of other business.
But there's a lot of room.
Around the backside, the backside, yeah.
I got some ground in Palmyra. We can build some storage units on. Just an exit. It's just across the street from Ocean 800 West.
You want to put storage units on it?
I, I would appreciate if you leave that message to them that, no, we don't feel like this is the best place, but if you want to get together to look at other places that currently the ordinance won't allow, storage units to be built on, we'd be happy to talk about that. I'd love to do that. And who knows, they may still want to proceed forward with the text amendment. Yesterday, the guy said he wasn't interested. Try to push rope uphill, but.
So I have a quick question, sorry, about that. If they decided, okay, fine, well, then we'll put the storage units 250 feet out where they are visible now and we're going to put the office space there, which is not visible.
That's Cedar City. Is this where you're talking about?
Here we are.
Storage unit land?
That's a possibility.
Then we've created what we don't want.
But here's, so.
Isn't that horrible?
There's another catch.
It's bad.
In order to have storage, you might improve it.
I know it's bad.
Industrial.
That's Cedar City.
Have to have a overlay that's ruined. So you can say.
I think that's a shame for that community.
They're already at it. They're absolutely at it.
Yeah.
Now, the ones way back, you know, you got.
You can do that one and then have.
That's a lot of storage.
Frontage here.
That would be different.
I wonder what the rental rates are on these things. That's a lot of units for Cedar City.
Yeah, I wonder for capital.
Like, each, each resident might get two units.
They wouldn't be built if they weren't, if they weren't at it.
Okay, any objections to me relaying that message the way I described it? That's what I think I'm hearing. So, Mr. Argal, I got a, had a main, but here's just a quick note.
Ooh, another note.
I'm going to run through this really quickly. These are the things that we talked about in the work session back in September. Riveting stuff.
This is good stuff.
So architectural stuff, kind of a typo there. I'm not sure what we're going to recommend that we do. It might be hire a consultant to help us come up with some really detailed standards. That's a little bit in flux, but I do know that by the end of the month, we'll have a plan of attack in mind because I plan on sharing that with the city council the first week in September, or sorry, the first week in February. So when I say standards, we're talking about the architectural standards that, that we've discussed a few times. So that's in the works. Accessory dwelling units. Some, or maybe all of you guys submitted your thoughts via the survey that we had up and running until the week before Christmas. So we have all of the data that was collected there. Some of the data is really simple to synthesize. Some of the other data that's more qualitative than quantitative takes a little bit longer. Scott Alet, our public information officer, is going through that process right now. He thinks he's going to have something to share next week. This relative to, these are the questions and this is the feedback that we received.
Did we get a lot of feedback?
Quite a bit, by way of hundreds of responses.
Nice.
Yes, it wasn't into the thousands, but it was a very strong, I mean, for a, for a survey, we got a very strong sample. As soon as I get that, I'll pass it on to you guys.
Good. I'd love to see that.
Absolutely. And from there, we think probably there's going to be value in having kind of a focus group, series maybe of discussions. And practically speaking, it's March or April, I think, before we'd have any texts ready for a, a change. But like we talked about even back in September, we want to be deliberate and proceed with, I won't say caution necessarily, but we want to get it right. And a big part of getting it right on this, I don't think it's necessarily coming up with the right standards or the right approach as much as it is giving the community as much of an opportunity to embrace it and understand the reasons that maybe we're making changes and that sort of a thing as anything else. So that sort of just public discussion that we have, I think, becomes very important on that issue. The Main Street vision, some of you guys might have been to some of the open houses and been a part of some of the discussions we had on that. The consultant met with UDOT the week before Christmas and got some, some feedback from them that will require them to make a few changes, I think, to the concept that they'd been working on. I think we're still wanting to get this in front of you guys in February, but that's a little bit out of our hands and staff right now as to whether or not that happens. But in essence, the project's done. It's just a matter of getting it through the public process. I think we want to adopt it as some kind of an appendage to our general plan. The River Bottoms vision, we will have a draft plan to unveil to the public by the first Monday in February.
Wow.
So that's not as fast as we wanted to see it. So I'm glad to see your reaction to that. We hoped to have had that a month ago.
Is it for the entire River Bottoms?
It is, yep. All of it. And I'll tell you.
Who, who's created it? Who's the group?
The consultant that's headed the project up for us is Logan Simpson. That's.
Okay, so it's a, you, you've hired a firm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Got a lot riding on it. That's, so.
Is it exciting?
Frankly, it's absolutely exciting. I have all the faith in the world that Logan Simpson's going to deliver quality product. I really do. As we've seen some of the preliminary drafts, though, I think because they're a little bit light on graphics and things like that, like, they've been a little bit underwhelming. So, you know, we've had some discussions with them about how strongly I believe, hey, this has to knock people's socks off when they see it and get them excited about what could happen in the River Bottoms instead of just getting fixated on concerns that they have about change in the River Bottoms, you know, whether it's somebody that lives up above that doesn't want to see any development or a developer that doesn't believe the plan allows for enough development. You know, it's somehow, you have to satisfy those completely opposite interests and get people comfortable that something good can result. Not an easy task, but that's what has to happen, so.
Yeah, the definition of a developer is someone who wants to build a house. And the division, and the definition of an environmentalist is the guy that's already built his house. It's true. Not in my backyard.
Certainly. So that's a huge one. And you will get a copy of that as soon as we have it. Zoning changes, Brandon and I haven't talked about this much, but he's got an assignment coming his way. This is, you know, maybe the storage units over on Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail is a good example of some zoning that is obsolete and needs to change. We have.
Why hasn't that project started, do you think? It, it's crazy. You know, you look back at some of the projects we've approved.
I think it started next week.
And you start, in your mind, you're seeing they're going to start breaking ground in a month or two, and then you just never see nothing.
Right.
It's like that gravel pit across the street to the south. I mean, who's going to put some nice homes in there?
Yeah, we, we can, so I know Sun Rock, why they haven't moved forward, but the storage units I can't speak to.
Well, one reason might be the same guys that are going to build it are the ones that built the ones on Highway 6 at the mouth of the canyon.
Oh, is it?
And look how long it took to build that one.
Oh, okay.
I think, might be that.
At least that's what I was, I was, I understand.
Sorry to take you down that rabbit trail.
Yeah, that's. So anyway, that's another thing that. So anyway, that's another thing that, uh, we talked about. And that's, that's potentially going to cost some heartburn, I think. So that's maybe why that hasn't moved quicker. Start talking about down zoning people's properties, which is what ultimately it would be. Brandon, when he starts that, he's going to, he's going to catch some hell, so. But we'll, we'll be on that soon. And then trees, so Trees is getting Alex Roylance over here to talk to us about Springville's program and Brandon's worked with Alex in two different cities now, knows him well. I think maybe we can.
Is that streetway?
We talked about the idea of changing our program to have some standards for street trees.
And we, we control it as a city, right?
And having us be more involved than we have, you know, maybe be involved like, for example, Springville is today or Provo.
What's their standard?
Well, uh, rather maybe than to call it a standard, I would say they just have a program.
Okay, what's their program?
The city collects funds from developers when they develop. City uses those funds kind of off season to purchase trees in bulk. And then the city goes in and plants street trees en masse, street to street. When a certain number of homes on each street get occupied. So at the end of the day, you have, uh, uniform species of trees on each street. They're all planted at about the same time. They'll get maintained in a similar way.
I like that plant too.
It's long overdue for us, I think, to get there. And we view Springville as an example. You go drive through some of the neighborhoods in the West Fields, you might feel differently. This is at least how I see it. That are 10 years old and they've got trees that have been in the ground 10 years and they're 30 feet on center and they're getting 25 and 30 feet tall and that's just beautiful.
Wow, Brandon, what a fun project for you. The cost of the trees are quite cheap when you can buy them en masse like that too.
Wow.
Dave, you hit every one of the onions I was hoping to hear.
This is, this is just a follow-up from that meeting we had in September.
I want to make one comment about the accessory dwelling units. I've been following that a little bit with the state legislature. There's, there's a lot of interest in the state legislature this year to address accessory dwellings and apartments. No, not, not accessory dwellings and apartments, but yeah. And so they're looking at, at high density housing and affordable housing. And there's a push to have a state law that would require some kind of low income housing. And that becomes a real issue for cities and towns. Because now you've got somebody just pulling out of their hat, a number and a way to address the situation. And of course, I think it's a lot better for the cities and towns to come up with their own ordinances and their own, their own ways to deal with that. And I think that it was mentioned by Dave when we started talking about this, that it's, that can be one of the things that a city can use is to say, we're working on low income housing by looking again at, at accessory apartments and accessory dwellings. Because they're one of the cheaper ways to do things. In general, you know, they don't, they don't get as much money for a basement as you would for, you know, one of Chris's apartments that he's going to build. And so that can be, you know, in the mix of what a city or a town would propose. Cause they're, they're, part of their solution to the problem. And I think the theory is by a lot of the, a lot of the cities is, is that we would rather be allowed to come up with our own plans of how we're going to do that rather than have it state mandated. And the bad thing is, is that a lot of this mandation, mandated, uh, language and stuff is coming from the biggest developers in the state. And they're laying the blame at, at the feet of the cities and towns that our, our fees are too high. That, that makes it hard for them to build affordable housing because we have all of these building fees and the, yes, impact fees and everything. And so it makes it difficult for them to build an affordable housing unit that can be profitable. And maybe it's true, maybe it's not, but they're holding that up and, uh, the, is it the Speaker of the House or the Senate?
House, Brad, Brad Wilson?
One of the larger developers in the state. And, you know, so he would probably push or look favorably upon some of this legislation, so. You know, Spanish, if, if we could get ahead of that a little bit and say, hey, we're already addressing that in some way, shape or form. We might have somebody say, it's not enough, but at least we started along that. Hopefully, you know, we can get ahead of it a little bit instead of the tail wagging the dog.
I think relative to things that impact cities with this next legislative session, it's all going to be about that. And we're going to take a beating from the legislature.
Yeah.
Is it city or all cities?
Collectively, yeah. And I wouldn't be surprised at all, I, I bet in fact, that at least a bill's going to be run that requires cities to allow accessory apartments everywhere. Other states have adopted that same kind of legislation. And we kind of debated on, well, we do, do we move forward with our discussions now? Do we wait and see what shakes out with the legislature? We decided to move forward.
If the people that we're talking about is behind this, the developers, how does that benefit them to have a bunch of accessory apartments?
Well, and honestly, I think that of all the proposals I've heard and man, I'll say this still, maybe on camera, but you know, legislature is very real estate interest heavy. If you just look at the primary sources of income for people that, for the legislature and it's predominant number of the folks have ties to real estate industry. So you could sometimes maybe try to see what their motivation might be collectively in terms of, of imposing some rules or maybe, uh, limiting what local jurisdictions can do relative to regulating real estate issues. On the accessory apartment one, I frankly think that's probably one of the less self-serving things. I think truly that's just about trying to make sure that every community is doing its part to try to help deal with the affordable housing issue. And obviously, I mean, I think that's something most of us appreciate. Still, local government, you know, kind of almost like states and the federal government and that relationship, we get a little bit tense when we're, we're no longer able to control our own destiny and some of those things, so. There's that edge to it for us, but, um, yeah, I'm a big proponent of accessory apartments without a doubt. As being, I think, the only way functionally in a rapid way to deal with the current housing situation.
One of the less painful things.
I think so too. NG predicted we'd be done at eight o'clock, so. We almost doubled that.
Dang.
Well, we're on, we're on double time, right?
Exactly, yes. So that's worth noting. Hey, let's call it triple time. What do you say?
But we didn't, we didn't move into the next.
We need to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right. We're not even going to vote on that.